Welcome, guests in the hall and residents watching at home. Today is the meeting of the July 6, 2021 Select Board Meeting, and I call this meeting to order and ask that you rise and join us in saluting our flag. Okay, I'm going to just ask you to be with us for a couple moments before we get into the meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I could not hear you.
Okay, that's not good.
Mr. Horan, can you hear me as well? So, no one can hear.
I can hear you, you can't hear us.
Can you hear me, Deborah?
Okay, I was assured this wasn't going to... You can hear Scott?
Vice Chairman Roberts, can you hear me?
It's, yes, it's an echo though, Mr. Chairman.
I wonder why that is. Can you hear me now, Deborah?
Oh, you sound like you're a million miles away. How did we do it last time?
We put that up there and see what happens.
Why would that make a difference? Is this turned off or is it on? Deborah, can you hear me right now?
It's, uh, echo.
I'm wondering if it's picking up each other's...
Yeah, Dave Young, can you help us out here? I didn't see Dave leave.
Should we only turn on as we're in use? I'm wondering if it's picking up the echo.
Maybe that's the case. Scott, yours is off. No, everybody's off except for me. Deborah, is that any different?
Can I hear?
Deborah, can you hear me any differently? Is it clearer?
You're very far away. I can hear your voice, but I can't distinguish what you're saying. Yes, there is an echo.
There's an echo, okay.
Mr. Horan, can you hear?
I'm getting probably the same thing that you are.
Okay.
I can barely make them out, but there's an echo, I can hear the voice, but it can get, and it gets garbled at times.
Right.
Is it only the chair that's echoing?
That's what it is.
Is that any better?
Some testing. Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you hear me?
So, we were only hearing through Deb? Can you hear me now?
If we don't get this resolved, I'm just going to call the meeting. I'm not... This isn't right. Deborah, how about now? Can you hear me?
Try that again.
How about now, Deborah? Can you hear me?
Yes, it's louder, but it's still just a louder echo.
Is it going to be suitable for you to participate in the meeting?
I couldn't even distinguish what you just asked.
Well, shut that off then and see what happens. Okay, that's probably dead in the corner. Deborah, how about now?
Yes, there is an echo.
Yeah, something's coming from that way. Try log, uh, try muting yourself on that. Are you muted now? Test, one, two, three. How about now, Deborah?
Yeah, it's better.
It's better? Is it enough for you to participate in the meeting, okay?
Yes.
Okay, that's the most important thing right there. And anybody else that's logged on to this meeting, are you able to hear us okay? They're all on mute. Okay, okay then. Okay then, so let's try to proceed. If at any time this meeting is difficult to work with, I will call the meeting and reschedule the items that are on the agenda because we, if we can't have people listening to us and participating in the meeting correctly, then it's not worth having it. Okay, so Deborah, you can still hear me, okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so before we get into the business, um, we had a tragedy in our community a few weeks ago, and we have a death that we wanted to announce, so I would ask Mr. Carrara if he would please make the presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Deborah, can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can, Mr. Carrara.
We had a passing, and then I'll get into the next one after this, please. William Bill Salaney was a longtime resident of the town of Stoughton. He was a businessman, and Billy was a carpenter by trade, a true craftsman for the people who knew him. And Billy would be called to Boston and Stoughton by many of the various building inspectors because he held a very high unrestricted builder's license, and he was knowledgeable in troubleshooting different things that would be structural. And, um, he passed away due to COVID, sad to say. Billy was also my cousin, and, um, he was a fixture at the corner store that Joe and I know as DeLuca's and later on as Stoughton Variety, which was owned by the Callanan family. And it was always a treat to hear his stories, past and present, and, um, so from us here to his wife Linda, his children Sharon, Dawn, Billy and Deanna, the board sends its sympathies for his passing.
I do, Mr. Chairman, this one's a little hard for me.
On Monday evening of 6/28/21, a tragedy had befallen Stoughton once again. We had lost two beautiful souls, Al Pedro and his dear wife Aldina. They were two wonderful people. They had three children, William, Melissa and Danny, that they raised with the finest of traditional family values. Al worked at the Stoughton Public Works Department for 32 years. He was a model employee of what a PWD employee should be. He did what he was asked to do and never a word why. He worked in various sections of Public Works Department and always to the best of his ability. No matter where you saw Al, in a snowplow, catch basin truck, in his beloved trash or recycling truck, he always had that big Al smile and something nice to say. He was proud of his accomplishments and his coworkers he worked with. He would work extra on weekends, and he loved the 4th of July Parade, driving in one of Stoughton's finest vehicles, blowing the horn and waving to all the small children. And you know how little kids love trucks? It was as if Al was saying to them, "Look, I graduated from Stoughton High and I couldn't wait to go straight to the public works. You, you can secure the licenses and the experience to keep your town services and infrastructure running and up, and up to date." That was Al's drive. Now, what I'd like to say for the Select Board members, we extend our deepest respect to Chief Donna McNamara and her police force, the Stoughton Fire Department, rescue and firefighters, for their professionalism and kindness in the response to the accident scene, to the Stoughton Portuguese community for the great loss of two respected and proud members, to his second family, the Stoughton Public Works. Al loved who he was and how he represented you. He was true to his job and how he did it. Thirty-two years stands for itself. His friendships and bonds with his fellow coworkers will always stand strong forever in your memories. In our deepest belief, we can only pray that Al and Aldina's final trip will deliver them to watch over their three children, William, Melissa and Danny, and their extended family members, brothers and sisters, the Portuguese community, and most of all, the proud men and women of the Stoughton Public Works Department. Please, dear God, may Al and Aldina rest in peace eternally. Thank you.
If you would all be kind enough to just stand and join us for a moment. Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Deborah Roberts, sitting up there on the screen.
Here.
Okay, so the meeting is open, so we will go into, on the agenda, there is an administration of...
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? Well, for the rest of the meeting, I wish everyone would speak up for those, I mean, granted, it's a small audience, but we made the effort to be here, and I know you are trying to help all the people that are here remotely, but I'd appreciate being able to hear the meeting. One of the things that's already been brought up is the loss of Mr. and Mrs. Pedro. Tomorrow's recycling in my neighborhood, and on previous meetings I've mentioned that you always got a hearty wave and a big hello from the crew on the trucks. And part of that hearty hello won't be there tomorrow. And I know some people think that the folks that pick up the trash are kind of at the bottom of the employment. My family doesn't think that way, and I know a lot of people really, when they don't show up, we miss them, but when they are there, um, they're always friendly, and you know tomorrow's going to be 90 degrees, and they're going to be out there working, just like, even though Al wasn't on the back of the truck at that time, there was probably many a summer day when he was on the back of that truck during his 32 years. The community lost someone else too, Gary of Peppercorns, and a lot of people know Peppercorns because it used to be on Pearl Street, and they've been at the Y for years. But what some people may not know is they catered the events here at Town Hall and many of the events at the Council on Aging. One of the things that seniors are looking forward to is the return of the senior suppers, and Gary and Liz catered those. And one of the reasons we love them is not just for the quality of their food, is they made every effort to keep the price low enough so as many seniors as possible could come out to this Council on Aging and enjoy some socialization and good food. These folks are never going to be billionaires, and they won't be in the history books, but they'll live in the memory of the people of Stoughton for a long, long time.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh, and I believe if I could ask my colleagues, when you are speaking, to make sure you turn your mic on, and that may be the issue, Ms. Walsh, because we were just trying to find out who was being heard. So what I'll be doing when I'm not speaking is to turn my mic off so we don't have a problem, but when you're going to speak, be sure to turn your mic on, speak up so Ms. Walsh can hear it as well. And I think I may have been guilty of that because when I looked down, my light was red, so I'm sorry about that. So with that, is there anybody else in the public that is sitting here with us? And I will go to our remote audience very shortly. Anybody in the audience like to be heard on Citizens Comments? Looks like nothing. Okay, thank you. Anybody at home, if you would like to speak on the Citizens Comments, would you please unmute your microphone and to identify yourself by giving your name and your address, please? Can you hear any none? One more call?
Sylvia Whiting.
Okay. Please identify yourself, name and address, please.
My name is Sylvia Whiting. I don't know if you can hear me because everything seems delayed.
Yes, we can hear you.
Ms. Whiting, can you hear me?
I live at 24 Jennifer Lane, and I, hello?
We can hear you.
I live at 24 Jennifer Lane, and I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 6. Maxwell Whiting and myself, Sylvia Whiting, sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, Stoughton Select Board, July 2nd, requesting that you create a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission. Not sure if you received the letter, so I just wanted to confirm that. If not, I can read it and drop a copy off for your records if you want me to do that.
Please read the letter, Ms. Whiting.
Okay, thank you. Systemic racism continues to be at unprecedented levels throughout our nation. In response to this, cities and towns across the Commonwealth and throughout the country are taking positive steps to ensure that all citizens are treated equally and fairly. Stoughton is a richly diverse community with a population of over 20% foreign-born and a school system that is almost 50% non-white, with over 17% of students who do not consider English as their first language. A diverse group of community residents are recommending that the town of Stoughton create a standing committee, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission. The official name to be determined. The Stoughton Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission will provide a process for stakeholders, employees, residents, businesses, visitors, et cetera, to share their concerns and recommend solutions related to discrimination, hate crimes and social division within the town of Stoughton. Well, some may say that doesn't happen here. We all know that no community is exempt from the stigma of systemic racism, and Stoughton is no different. Stoughton has experienced some incidents of racism, discrimination, and the negative impacts of lack of representation within the hierarchy of town government. Clearly, issues of discrimination, hatred and division must be addressed within the town of Stoughton, and the formation of a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission is only a first step, but a very positive one. Many local communities have human rights commissions, including the neighboring towns of Sharon, Brockton, Easton, Mansfield, New Bedford, Dedham and Needham, just to name a few. Some ways that the Racial Equity Commission may benefit our community include: ensure that all town employees receive annual anti-discrimination training; promote diversification of the town workforce to better reflect the population; remove barriers to accessing town services, such as language barriers and visual signs that may be offensive; become a resource for individuals who have experienced acts of discrimination; provide town-wide educational opportunities such as bystander racial equity and human rights training; create events to further unite all who live in Stoughton through understanding and embracing differences. We request that the creation of the Stoughton Diversity Equity and Inclusion Equity Commission, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission, be brought before the Select Board at your next regularly scheduled meeting. Any costs associated with establishing such a commission will be outweighed by the substantial benefits. It is vital that this incremental step be taken to ensure that this commission is an official arm of Stoughton Town Government. We are available to provide any assistance you may seek in setting up such a commission. Yours truly, Maxwell and Sylvia Whiting. Other signatories include Keisha Charlotte, Teddy Hanson Dewar, Carol Goodman, Maureen Kelly, Michael Horan, who's a town meeting rep, Artist Johnson, town meeting rep, Stephanie LaHoy, Frank Mendoza, Barbara Marshall, Kate Matthews, Angela Motley, Dr. Stephen O'Himer, Karma Pearl O'Himer, Alicia Rinaldi, a town meeting rep, Larry Sawyer, town meeting rep, Betty Sabree, Teresa Tapper, town meeting rep, Steve Tapper, town meeting rep, Ben Thomas, town meeting rep, Dr. Maxwell Whiting and Sylvia Whiting, town meeting rep. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to read this letter to you this evening.
Thank you. Mic wasn't on. Ms. Whiting, thank you for reading them.
I can't understand what you're saying.
Okay, how about now? Any better?
No. All of a sudden, your voice went away, Mr. Chairman.
Is this any better?
It's a little echo, Mr. Chairman.
This one is off. Any better? Ms. Roberts?
Yes, there's an echo, Mr. Chairman. It was perfect, uh, before.
How about now? Is that better?
Uh, you're distant, we can barely hear you.
I don't know what we're going to do here. Is there anybody at home that can hear me? Or is that right across the board? Okay, Michael, thank you, I could see you.
I'm sorry?
Are you muted right now?
Can't hear you.
I, I can't be muted, I have to be, this is where it's picking up the sound, I believe.
Just let's check and see if it's where you're sitting.
That was supposed to have been fixed, correct?
It was, and I, and it was a few minutes ago, so I'm not sure what happened. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you perfectly, Dr. Grimm.
All right, I've got it right on top of me, and we shouldn't, how about now? Deborah, can you hear me?
Yes, it's much better, but you're still distant, a little distant, but at least we can make it out and proceed.
I'm going to swallow this thing in a minute. I know there's people would like to see that too, but I'm not going to engage. Okay, I don't know what we're going to do, folks.
Why don't you try?
Whatever Dr. Grimm is doing, it's, it's working, and we can hear Mr. Carrara quite well.
Okay, how about now? Can you hear me now? Ms. Roberts?
Yes, perfect.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, I'm going to yell into this thing now. I don't know where yours went. Okay, so as long as you can hear me. I, I, you know, we can laugh a little bit, but it's also very troublesome that we can't figure this out. If, if, we're going to conclude, continue, I'm sorry, with this process of being able to have people remote in, which is, you know, making it easier for everybody in addition to the people that are going to be in the hall, it has to work. Madam, Madam Town Manager, I would ask that prior to the next meeting, that a comprehensive, and I'm not saying it hasn't been done, but we've got to make sure that this works perfectly at our next meeting. If it's not done by the Thursday prior to our meeting, I won't schedule an agenda. It's not fair to the residents that are at home. If we want to go back to the old days and just have everybody come up to Town Hall, we may have to do that, but I'm, I'm trying to be inclusive here and to make sure that everybody can sit comfortably because sometimes, as we know, you won't be on the agenda until nine o'clock at night, and at home, you can have it in the background and hear it, then jump in. So we're trying to make this, but if it's not going to work for the residents, and again, and I applaud the efforts of the folks at SMAC, I know that there was a lot of hard work going on, but we've got to make sure that this works perfectly. Okay, so with that, we get back up here to the agenda, and we did, so it's Citizens Comments. Is there anybody else on Citizens Comments remotely that would like to be heard before I move on?
Can't hear you.
Can't hear me.
I can hear you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman said, "Anyone else for Citizens Comments?"
Okay, hearing none, I'm going to move on. And with Select Board Comments, Ms. Roberts, do you have any comments?
Uh, yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. To you, Mr. Chairman, and to my fellow board members, I do advocate, can you hear me?
Yes.
Not of head.
We can hear you fine.
Deborah, can you hear me? Okay. I do advocate for the commission that Dr. and Mrs. Whiting recommended. There are a number of ways we could go about doing that. The Select Board can, um, can appoint two or three people to be on that commission, that Diversity and Inclusion Commission. We could also ask the Charter Review Committee, and that's the recommendation I am making to ask the Charter Review to develop and recommend to the Select Board a more robust diversity commission. All would take the steps of going to Town Council, then to the Town Meeting Representatives to vote on, then to the state, then to our voters. And I recommend that course of action, and I would hope my fellow board members would vote on that as well. If that requires a motion, I'm prepared to make a motion in that regard.
All right, Ms. Roberts, I believe that the process, if we were going to have Charter Review look at that, is it would have to be submitted as an article at the next special or annual town meeting, which we can do, and then it would go to, in this case, if we don't have a special, go to the fall town meeting, and, or if we're going to have the next fall, uh, fall or special, and then it has to be voted, as you said, by town meeting, and then it would go through the, the annual appointments, which puts us into next year, possibly. When the board does the process, to keep the, the membership consistent with the makeup of the board, which is diverse, may I suggest that we have the Select Board appoint the commission, because we could have it up and running in 30 days and get to work. Okay? And if each Select Board Member, we've done this before, it's been some time, but each Select Board Member would appoint a member of this commission so that the vision of each member of the board is, is looked at as well, and we create that board without, you know, anybody pointing fingers or anything like that. It'll be an open process. Anyone who wants to apply could, but I'm looking at, why wait until possibly next year when we can have this up and running? I would put it on the next agenda, and if, or earliest when we would put out for advertisements and put it out for two weeks, anybody that would like to apply could submit a letter, and then we will act on it as soon as that deadline, on the very next meeting of the deadline. We... people that, Mr. Gito, I agree with you, but there are people that have logged in here, and we've got to try and make it through this meeting. I don't want to shy anybody at home where they can't hear and feel that we're being honest and, you know, trying to make it work. I don't know if, I'll put it out there, if the members of the board want to close this meeting right now...
What I'm concerned about is the majority of people can hear, so if a few individuals can't, it may not be a problem on our end.
Okay, well, Dolores has never been, had a problem with being her hearing group.
I know. And that, Dolores, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you too, Dr. Grimm.
So your mic is working, other mics are not.
What Mr. Carrera says, I think.
Deborah, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you're faint. I can hear Dr. Grimm perfectly. So the message to the audience is that we are going to form a commission. It's going to be a standing committee in the charter, and you're going to advertise for it, for our, this week, and people will apply by next meeting. Is that true, Mr. Chairman?
Well, can you hear me now, Deborah? Deborah?
Mr. Chairman, I can hear you perfectly.
Okay, great. I didn't, because I was sitting there trying to make microphones work, and I think I'm down to the last one.
So I will repeat that, Mr. Chairman, so I can confirm what you said, that we are going, we, the board, Select Board, will form a standing committee, commission, that's a standing committee, mission within the charter. You will accept applications. It will be posted and publicized, and then we will appoint at our next Select Board meeting. Is that true, Mr. Chairman? Is that my understanding correct?
The understanding is not totally correct, but yes, except for it will not be a standing committee that is a town meeting standing committee. What I want to do is get the committee started now. If we go through the standing committee process, we have to petition town meeting, which means the Select Board submitting an article for town meeting, and it has to be voted by town meeting to be standing committee of town meeting. So that will take us into, at the earliest, the late fall or spring town meeting of 2022, and that's, in my opinion, too long. If the board votes the committee, we could start work right away, and then we would, we would draft a set of rules and goals for the committee that would be reviewed and accepted by the board. We will put out for advertisement, you know, for people interested, and we would discuss, you know, the amount of people, and for a small start, you know, I was, my suggestion was that we, each Select Board member, have one appointment they would make to that board. Now, if down the road, after this committee begins its work, I think it's going to be a much easier sell to town meeting when they say, look, you know, look what we've done since the Select Board established the committee. So you're right in everything you said, except the fact that it will not be a standing committee of town meeting that has any involvement with the charter committee. Okay, but we'll get...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll move from there. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And can I be heard by other people at home, okay, right now? Somebody, Mr. Horan, can you hear me, okay? I couldn't hear you now. Okay, I saw you nod, then I'll take that. Okay, so we'll...
Mr. Chairman, do we need to vote on that as a board?
Yes, yes. I was just making, yes, I was just making sure, no, I'm just making sure nobody else has any questions before we move on to a motion.
I guess I have a question.
No, that's not the next meeting. It's not the next meeting, Scott. It cannot be the next meeting. No, it's not the, we will begin the process. We can't vote on people at the next meeting when we don't know what the task is and there's not an application period. Okay, so I guess what I'll do is I'll repeat this one last time. If anybody disagrees, you know, we could, what, we will begin the process immediately, that I will reach out with Ms. Roberts and the people who have petitioned this tonight to get the ball rolling on some type of admission charge on what the committee's going to do. When we have that, and Ms. Roberts, I would, I'm going to say, we'll let, you know, take the lead for the board, when that's done...
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
When that is done, and we have a charge, and what the committee is going to do, how they're going to do it, you know, things like that, then we will put out for advertisement for a couple of weeks, for people to send in their letters of saying why they would like to be on the committee, and then at that time, we will then schedule it, once we have all the applications, and schedule it at the next agenda, following the close of the advertisement period. Then the board will meet again and appoint people to the committee. Okay? Mr. Gito, you got a question?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, Mr. Kavy, standing quietly on the other side there? Okay, no questions, okay? So with that, Ms. Roberts, you have a motion you would like to make?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept, I move that we form a commission, Diversity Equity Commission. We advertise and we post, and we work immediately on that mission. Was there anything else, Mr. Chairman, that I missed?
Good. So is there a second to the motion? Mr. Kavy seconds the motion. All right, any additional comments by members of the board? Mr. Gito?
No.
Mr. Carrera?
No.
Mr. Kavy? No questions of the chair. So I will now call for the vote. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy? Chair votes in favor. So motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Oh, my pleasure. Okay, so let me get back on here, and, boy, this is getting to be fun. Okay, yes, we're in still Select Board comments. I've just, what's that? Citizen, no, we're, no, we're Select Board comments now, yes. Okay, so on Select Board comments, Mr. Kavy?
I only have a couple of comments. The first thing I'd like to mention, I know we've had, people have mentioned that there have been numerous losses in our community, I'd like to just highlight one other one. There's a man just a year older than me, he's 45 years old, Brendan McGuire, known to his friends as Stu, has lived in the town for about seven years, eight years, with his family, his wife's a town meeting rep, Lee McGuire. He passed away last weekend from, after a two-year battle with pancreatic cancer. Was able to keep up a very strong attitude, good attitude through it, but ultimately he lost his battle.
Excuse me, Mr. Kavy, I, can I hear you?
Is this better?
No, it's not. It's on. Yeah.
All right, what is the wish of the board? This is ridiculous.
I think we need to adjourn, I make a motion to adjourn.
Ms. Roberts, the motion's been made to adjourn the meeting because we cannot conduct this meeting in the way it's going on.
The only thing I might ask is we do have a public hearing for people who did come for a license.
Yeah, well, no, it's a public hearing. That's the point, too. It is a public hearing, and the public has a right to be engaged, and we can't assure that...
Mr. Chairman, I have a suggestion. I can hear Deborah LeBlanc perfectly. Is there an opportunity for you to switch seats with her? Just to continue the meeting?
I'm wondering if it's the location. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Dr. Grimm.
I know.
So it's got to be the location.
No, that's just an external speech.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure why, but it seems that when you're sitting on the sides, you can hear.
I wonder if just Joe used an electronic device to try to log into the meeting. Can I go get my laptop and...
Ms. Roberts, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Deborah LeBlanc is going to go get her laptop, and we'll see if that works.
This is Lou Gito. Can you hear Lou Gito?
And she could be a Joe, and now she can't hear a seat, so, and they tested it today. They didn't touch one girl. And it's not, they can't hear anything. It's a mic that I have, we can hear, so it doesn't...
Deborah, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, Mr. Walsh, I can hear you perfectly.
Yeah, I think, okay, great. I think, just to, just that's why I think you pegged it. I think the issue is the audio that the selectman is coming through is over Deborah LeBlanc's mic, so they're not getting no audio on their side, so...
Okay, great.
Because that's the only way you can...
Ms. Roberts? Ms. Roberts?
Oh, yes, Ms. Daddin, I can hear you.
Yeah. Was there a formal beginning to the meeting? I never heard the Pledge of Allegiance. I didn't hear any of that.
I saw people standing up. I couldn't hear any of it, but I saw people with their hands over their hearts, and that's the only way I knew that they were reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Daddin.
If everybody can, if everybody can hear me right now, because I think my, I think from where I'm sitting, you can, the chairman's going to log on, on a, on a remote, on a remote link, so let's just give us a second and see if that helps. They can hear my location, they could hear you at one point, they can hear you. It doesn't make sense if it's from sitting here, they can hear me. At least if we can just do the public hearing, if we can make that work.
And the consent agenda?
And the consent agenda, yes.
There's some permits in there.
Well, they, they hear and...
Ms. Roberts, can you hear me now?
Oh, excellent, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Okay, we are getting... Suggest Deborah, suggest that Deborah mute her microphone.
Deborah LeBlanc, mute her microphone.
Now, what does that do to the people at home that can't be heard here? Okay, Ms. Roberts, could you just give us a count to 10, please, so that Deborah can try to adjust her volume accordingly? Thank you, Mr. Perry, I saw that comment. Okay, I can't hear anyone from home. Deborah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear.
Deborah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, go up a little higher. Yeah, see, we are getting feedback.
I can deal with it if everyone else can.
I hate that stuff. You hear yourself talk after. Okay. Let's see here. What's that? No, it's not. It's right now.
Okay, so then Deborah, can you hear her?
Yeah, now my volume looks, is up.
So turn yours over, and let's put that volume down. In our trust.
Yep, I'm at 100%. Ms. Roberts, can you hear me?
Perfectly, Mr. Chairman.
Right, so people at home are not going to hear that, unless...
There we go. There's the feedback.
Yeah, okay, let's try that. Is, Ms. Roberts, can you still hear me clear?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yes, clear.
People in the audience, could you hear Ms. Roberts, okay, through that microphone? I think we got it. I'm not bothering you.
You are an IT maniac.
You know what I feel like, if anybody ever saw the submarine movie where the guy took the two wires and hung on to them so they could make a radio call? That's what I feel like, down Periscope. That's what it feels like, you know, my toes on one and my hands on the other, and, okay, I do apologize, and I just, I do want to repeat that we had SMAC doing a lot of work up here with Trish Shropshire. I know that they worked hard, and they said everything was good, but technology, right? Okay, so let's try to get back on track here. What this does for me now is creates a, an issue with seeing, you know, I don't have to see that, I can look over there. Okay, so we are back on to Select Board comments. And Mr. Kavy, did you get to finish? I believe you were...
Yeah, so I appreciate that. I just, a few things I want to mention. The first is, is the death of a resident, Brian McGuire, he volunteered with the town in the past, his wife is currently on, a member of town meeting, and unfortunately he lost his battle to pancreatic cancer. He's very young, 45 years old, and I just wanted to, let people know that he will be missed, there's two very young daughters, and they will be, I'm sure, in all of our thoughts and prayers.
Oh, excellent, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Okay, well, we are getting.
Suggest, suggest Deborah, suggest that Deborah mute her microphone.
Deborah LeBlanc, mute her microphone.
Now, what does that do to the people at home who can't be heard here? Okay, Ms. Roberts, could you just give us a count to ten, please, so that Deborah can try to adjust her volume accordingly? Thank you, Mr. Perry. I saw that comment. Okay, I can't hear anyone from home. Deborah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear.
Deborah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, go up a little higher. Yeah, see, we are getting feedback. I can deal with it if everyone else can. I hate that stuff. You hear yourself talk after. Um, okay. What's that? Well, no, it's not. It's right now. Yeah, now my volume looks, is up. Yep, I'm at 100%. Ms. Roberts, can you hear me?
Perfectly, Mr. Chairman.
Right, so people at home are not gonna hear that, unless. Okay, let's try that. Is, Ms. Roberts, can you still hear me clear?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yes, clear.
Uh, people in the audience, could you hear Ms. Roberts okay through that microphone? I think we got it. You know what I feel like, that if anybody ever saw the submarine movie where the guy took the two wires and hung on to them so they could make a radio call? That's what I feel like, down parasol. That's what it feels like. You know, my toes on one and my hands on the other and. Okay, I do apologize, um, and I just, I do wanna repeat that we had SMAC doing a lot of work up here with Trish Schlossscher. I know that they worked hard and they said everything was good, but technology, right? Okay, so let's try to get back on track here. What this does for me now is creates a an issue with seeing. You know what? I don't have to see that. I can look over there. Okay, so we are back on to Select Board comments. And Mr. KB, uh, did you get to finish? I believe you were.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate that. I just, um, there were a few things I wanted to mention. Uh, the first is, is, uh, the resident, Brian McGuire. Uh, he, he, uh, has volunteered with the town in the past. His license is currently on. He's a member of town meeting, uh, and unfortunately, he lost his battle to pancreatic cancer. Uh, he's very young, 45 years old, and I just wanted to, uh, let people know that he will be missed. There's two, two very young daughters and, uh, and, uh, they will be, I'm sure, in all of our thoughts and prayers. As they, now that they're, that their own futures, point to be extremely difficult. Please. I think we've kinda moved on, like, we're not in the middle of this. So I, I will be there at that.
Well, we can, once, if you want, before we leave, make sure your remote be yourself, you know, and, okay. Okay, uh, and actually, if, if I could ask, um, you know, following Mr. KB's, uh, sympathy of a moment, if we could, again, just one moment for a moment of silence, if you'd join me, please. No, Brendan. Okay. So with that, Mr. Carrara. Any system, uh, select board comments? Mr. Cheeto.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Can Mr. Cheeto be heard at home?
I'll take that as a yes. No, I shouldn't.
No.
No, I wouldn't. You, you can't hear Mr. Cheeto?
No.
Yeah. Okay, well, he's not talking right now. Lou, talk, speak up. Yell at him.
Okay, I'll do that. There was something that happened in June 7th of this year. There was the downtown rezoning proposal was presented in a Zoom meeting to all the residents of the town. There were 28 people who signed on. About five or six of them were, uh, were presenters and the other 22 or 23 people were residents. I happened to be one of those. And I learned that, uh, or I thought that the Select Board was negotiating to purchase the post office property to implement a key component of the master plan to create an economic and social engine to invigorate the downtown. I was on the master planning committee. Uh, I was a member of that for three or four years and we had somewhere in the order of a couple hundred people participating in that activity over those four years. And, uh, I found that, uh, well, the vision for the master plan is, I understood it, was to create a block bounded by Wyman Street, Washington and Porta Streets, along with the train station property, all facing a green with outside dining, benches, entertainment opportunities, and likely keeping the post office retail operation in place and allowing the remaining space to be used for art, entertainment, or other town purposes, or municipal purpose or public purposes. Instead, what I heard was that the planning board was rezoning this space for up to six-story buildings. I would have expected the planning board to recognize the inconsistency in its proposed, proposal compared to the master plan and at least communicate this deviation to the Select Board, given that the Select Board is the appointing authority to the Planning Board. So. I'd like the board to restart the negotiations with the post office. And I plan to prepare a draft plan to restart negotiations with the post office and submit it for the Select Board's consideration and refinement by the next Select Board meeting, with the hope that it gets favorable approval after you work on it a little bit. That's my only comment.
Okay, Mr. Cheeto, the board will await. There was a vote that was duly taken and I believe that you requested all the documents and you can see the communications.
I, I have not yet received those.
Okay, I've been told it's been emailed to you twice. The fire one? Okay.
She sent me something saying that you would allow her to send me the other material. Okay.
All right, can we make sure that that reaches Mr. Cheeto's hands, like, tomorrow? Okay, because I apologize for that delay, Lou. I mean, the, you know, if the board members want something, they should be able to get it.
I, I think this is, there's a whole lot of startup going on here, so that's fine.
No, no, it's, well, for some of us, it don't really start up. It's, it's sort of like, here we go again. Uh, everybody has a right to bring it up and if you wanna, you know, put together a motion and bring it forward, be my guest and we will get it scheduled as quick as possible. All right, Mr. Carrara. No, okay, Mr. KB, good. And Ms. Roberts, any Select Board comments?
Oh, I made my comments, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I made my comments regarding, no further additional comments.
Okay, very good. All right, so the chair has none. So with that, we'll move on to the town manager. Hopefully, you can be heard.
Usually, everybody can hear me whether they want to or not. Just as an update to Mr. Cheeto, I actually did discuss things with the planner today. The sixth story has been revised out because the, the, the public had been heard on that. Uh, my opinion had been heard on that. And he's back now to four with the fifth story as a special use. I know there are other issues that you wanna deal with, but just so you are aware, I got an update on that this morning, in fact. And you and I had discussed that that was a bit of a problematic change that had not been thoroughly vetted, I don't think. But that has been revised. Uh, I, we asked for the patience of the public on Friday for trash collection. It will happen. It just may not happen at the normal time of day because of the services for Mr. Pedro. We want town staff to be able to appropriately attend services. Uh, they all want to continue with collection that day. Uh, I think Mr. Pedro would have wanted that to happen as he took such tremendous pride in his work. But we do ask for some indulgence on time. You may not see your trash collected at its, its regular time, but it, it will be collected and if there is any delay, it would be picked up on Saturday, so we.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, Dr. Graham. Ms. Stanton cannot hear you to take the minutes.
Okay. Can, any better? Can you hear me now? Yes? Okay, I see a nod. Okay, so I need to belt it out, too. Um, so again, trash collection may be slightly delayed on Friday, but all should get picked up. Uh, if not, it will be replaced, uh, it'll be collected on Saturday. Um, I suggested everybody go to the recreation page. There's a lot going on in Stoughton Recreation Department. I believe Sunday night, we start a summer concert series. Uh, there are a lot of activities for youth. The programs fill up very quickly. So please visit the Stoughton Recreation page. Matt Quashon is doing a tremendous job. Um, and while we're on Mr. Quashon, I wanna thank him for great work on the parade and it was great participating. Again, um, it's just awesome to be back out and have so many people show up to celebrate the Fourth. And again, Mr. Quashon did a tremendous job pulling this together despite the fact that when we started pulling this together, we didn't even know if we'd be able to have it because of COVID restrictions. So I wanna pass along a thank you on that. Uh, I also, uh, Mr. Carrara mentioned, uh, the police department and Stoughton Fire, with the tragic incidents for Mr. and Mrs. Pedro. I also wanna thank Father Carlos, who, yeah, I, I, and who joined Chief McNamara on, um, a very, very difficult night with some very difficult tasks that evening. Um, and he's, he's just a good member of this community and, and has partnered with us to, to try to, to provide some comfort where he can. Uh, I do wanna announce, we formally swore in Fire Chief Carroll last week. We will be doing a ceremonial swearing-in. Uh, one of the reasons we held on doing the ceremonial is there will be a whole number of promotions down the ranks and we would like to have a big promotional event for all who are getting promoted. Assistant Chief officially is also now Assistant Chief Jack Maycomber, who's a tremendous member of our department as well, so I'm very, very excited about the team that I have leading our fire department and I have full confidence for the public that they're just gonna have a phenomenal leadership team. Uh, that's also our emergency management lead, um, those two gentlemen, along with our police department. So, um, the public is in excellent hands. But with those two promotions, we'll come a whole host and a few retirements that we've had. There's probably gonna be about six people being promoted. And so we'll do a full ceremonial promotion with pinings and families and the board, obviously, and the public. So we'll let you know within a few weeks about that. A lot's gonna depend on how those, the timing on those promotions happening. And.
Mayor, Mayor Town Manager, if I can, on, on that event, I would really like to, um, to make sure that that's inclusive of all of our departments. At that time, and that would be a special, not a part of a Select Board meeting. And, uh, I would make sure that it goes on the town set and that we get it into the suburban shopper, inviting the public, you know, to, to be a part of this and that'd be the only issue of business that night.
Absolutely, and I will, uh, work with the school department, possibly use the auditorium if we can.
Yes, okay. Great, thank you. There you go.
And, uh, that's, that is it from the town. On that note, that is it from the town manager.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Dolores.
Yes. What great event are we all being invited to? I did not hear it.
Okay, Dolores, that's gonna be a, um, like a, a town employee promotional and retirement recognition event. We have several retirements in the fire department and then as well as promotions and new appointments in the fire department. We've had several retirees in the police department, uh, public works department as well, uh, and town hall, I believe. So we wanna have one event where we can recognize all of our valued employees and, uh, as they retire or, you know, just step into their new roles, whether they're, in the case of the fire chief, uh, he's been with us for, you know, 20 or close to 30 years, I believe now, and, uh, he's now a new chief. We have a new deputy chief. We have captains and lieutenants and firefighters coming online. So we'd like one event where everybody can take part.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dolores. I'm glad you can hear me. Okay, so with that, we have, this is the latest we've ever run on a meeting so far and, uh, we have a 7:20 appointment for the boards and commissions and we don't have, um, I believe, this is gonna be pretty quick because these positions are basically ready to be filled. So I will ask each of the applicants to come forward and, uh, the only one that I can see that is for the board assessors is that we have, um, two for a one-year spot, one three-year. Uh, in the rest of them, where we have one position and one applicant, I will ask that, uh, that applicant if they would like to address the board and, uh, and looking at the essence of time, if they would like to present the board or if a board member has questions of a specific appointment that they would like to ask the applicant. Our first one, and I, I believe, we do have Mr. Hill here and Janet Teal, are you in the room? Hey, Ms. Teal, are you online at home?
Yes, I am. I'm, um, online at home.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Uh, so with that, item A is Mr. Hill. Mr. Hill, would you like to come forward? Let's hope that microphone works.
I swore I wasn't gonna ask if you can hear me now.
Can the folks at home hear Mr. Hill?
Can everybody hear me at home? Ms. Roberts?
Ms. Roberts, can you hear Mr. Hill?
Oh, it's very faint, Mr. Hill.
That's it, sit right on top of it. There you go.
I should have wore it in my carnation. Uh, how's that, Ms. Roberts? Better?
His audio is coming through yours, Joe, so it's not gonna help getting close to that.
Try it now. My audio is.
Can you hear me now? Deborah?
Deborah, Deborah, she can hear. Deborah, you can hear Mr. Hill?
Yes.
We can't hear her because my audio's off now.
Unless he just walks closer to your laptop, Joe, if that helps.
Okay, bring your chair up here. I'm gonna turn my laptop around. Boy, I'll tell ya, we're getting really resourceful at running these meetings. I'm waiting for the tin cup. Yeah, I'm waiting for the tin cups and string to come out. Oh my God. Well, now, how do I get to this one? Oh my God. Okay. Oh no, I, I got it, but, uh. See if that one will work. Ms. Roberts, how's that? Any better?
Perfect. I can hear you, Joe.
Deborah?
Yes.
Uh, so, um, my name is Richard Hill. I'm 249 William Kelly Road.
Everything is frozen now.
Excuse me. Um, I'm currently an assessor. You can't hear me. How about this? Just so folks know what's happening, it's, uh, SMAC technician was telling us that they couldn't hear me, so I just pulled the chairman's microphone right to me. Deborah, can you still hear me? Deborah Roberts? Deborah Roberts, can you hear me?
Is Mr. Hill saying anything?
It's, it still looks frozen to me, Deborah.
Yeah, oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Oh, this says you lost your network connection. This might be a Wi-Fi problem. If he's having a problem just here. This is probably a Wi-Fi issue. Yeah, this shows I have a Wi-Fi connection. Her connection.
You might have to put the password.
All right, we're just gonna do this. We're gonna. Okay, so. Mrs. Carrara says she can hear Rick. Yeah, but we, I can't even hear them. All right, how, this, this might be repressed memories from, from Stephanie, so. Ms. Roberts, can you hear me?
Perfectly, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hill, try speaking and we'll see if we pick this up. Ms. Roberts, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Hill, I can, yes.
Great.
We might be able to get this done.
Okay, Rick. Continue. To continue, uh, so, um, I'm applying for a position on the Board of Assessors. There are three, uh, board members on that, with that group. I'm currently a sitting assessor on that board. Uh, filling a partial three-year term that, uh, became available when somebody had to leave unexpectedly before. Outside of that, I've been a twenty-plus-year town meeting representative. Twenty, twenty-plus-year, um, on the Charter Review Committee, many of those, mostly, probably. I was appointed to the Citizens Advisory Group, to the downtown rural development planning group under the Stoughton redevelopment authority, as part of the original membership of the High School Building Committee, also vice-chair, previous vice-chair, previous member of the Public Safety Facilities Building and Construction Committee. So I think there are other things mixed in there, but I took a lot of experience, I guess is what I said, within the town government. So I spent a lot of time this past year and a half learning the assessors role. The certification is required, I'm pretty well through that, once there's ten online modules, so I just need to take the certifications exam, which I can do in the next couple of weeks. We're kind of in a high-demand period for the assessors' office, so we're looking at the FY22 certification process, which is due by August. We've got some pretty significant cases in front of the appellate tax board, we've got new valuations due for personal property, including utilities, which are four, five, or four. We've got, you know, the new growth evaluations also in process, and commercial industrial property, personal property information being processed. So there's a lot going on just at this time of the year. So I've done an awful lot in researching and studying for this position. I don't, I think that the assessor's job is ongoing, requires constant education and updating, and I've maintained, I've been current of all of that, so we'd like to take any questions.
Mr. Gito, any questions?
None.
Mr. Carrara?
I just have a comment that, I like that I saw that Rick has the certifications and he's obtaining more, so I thought that was a good thing, that he was moving forward with all that stuff.
Yeah, there's one in particular, 101 certification, 101, which is, I need to sit for and take. I go through all the courses and then go back and take, and take the tests as I go because I want to get an A.
Okay, Mr. Cavy?
Thank you. I have just a couple of questions. This is, these are, in this case, these are the questions that are going to be asked at all appointments. First one is, tell me what some of the chief concerns you have regarding the Stoughton tax base. Is there anything that, that, now that you're here, can help us understand better?
The Stoughton tax base, so in this year particularly, the valuations that fluctuate, so residential, valuations are going up, commercial, industrial, and personal property is staying flat or declining. So it really changes the formula a lot. So when you are calculating, you know, going through the classification process and then trying to establish a level and calculate the tax rates, there's a lot of material that goes into that, a lot of data that fluctuates. So I think outside of that, you know, certainly we'd like to expand the tax base. The Park Street Sewer is a, is a, is a great example of how that can be done, and about to bring new business down to, say, Campinelli, and those people will pay taxes, their properties will increase in value, and they'll pay more taxes on that valuation. So expanding the tax base is important, and we continue to do that. So in the meantime, we look for new growth and continue to focus on it.
Thank you. And the other question also has, with assessors, it always comes back to the certification, which is, of course, 101, you mentioned. I know you have, I think it's two years to complete that, and your term started in June 2018, so sort of at that, right around that threshold. So once you get, take those tests, then you'll be fully certified.
Yes.
Is that something, because you said you had it done a couple, is something that could be done in the next sixty days?
Oh, absolutely. Perfect. I can actually commit to having it done in July.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you very much. Those are all the questions I had.
And Ms. Roberts, any questions? Mr. Hill?
No questions for Mr. Hill. I came from the assessors' department, so I'm pretty familiar with the, with the requirements. So thank you very much.
Okay, and I'm all set. Is there anything else you'd like to close for the board?
No.
No, I'm just, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of continuous learning, and I'm happy to volunteer for that role, and although I think it pays fifty dollars every, every other month or whatever, so volunteering, yes, but I'm happy to, as I am with all the volunteer work that my wife and I do all the time. And just as a point of clarification, my wife Anita Hill is on the school committee.
You get paid more than we do.
I know. I know.
At least you got one of the paying jobs. Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
Ms. Teal, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. For a minute, I didn't think you could. I was like, here we go again.
I couldn't hear, I'm one of the other gentleman that was speaking, but I can hear you clearly.
Okay, so you're, if you'd please, we know your name now, and if you'd like to address the board, tell us why you've applied for the Board of Assessors and your little background and so forth, and why you should be considered. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much. So I started out in 2006. I took the appraisal course. I passed that. At the time, you had to do the apprentice program, and so I had a little bit of training on that, but it was kind of difficult getting someone to, like, constantly work with me because they had a lot of other trainees. So I kind of left that alone. I have a real estate license. I work in Town and Randolph. I worked in the tax collector's office for probably about five years, so I'm familiar with, you know, the assessing duties to some degree. Now I am in the accounting office, so I see the flip side of it. So I just wanted to get back involved with the assessing appraisal aspect of it. So I don't have these, I don't have the certifications or anything, but I do have a strong interest in it.
Okay. All right, so go down. Mr. Gito, any questions?
None.
Mr. Carrara?
I have none.
Mr. Cavy?
I have the same questions that I asked Mr. Hill. The first is regarding Stoughton's tax base. What are your, some of your chief concerns? I know that you work in a neighboring community, so the problem is quite similar.
Ms. Teal, could you hear Mr. Hill?
No, he's kind of going in and out.
Okay, are you able to hear me right now?
Can you hear Mr. Cavy?
Yes.
Okay. So the first question is regarding Stoughton's tax base. What are some of your chief concerns? And I know that you might not know quite as much about the specifics of Stoughton, but you work very closely, in a close neighboring community, so I'm sure they're quite similar. Regarding to, regarding to Stoughton's tax base, what are your chief concerns?
You are definitely, you're echoing. What was the last part?
Regarding Stoughton's tax base, what are your chief concerns?
Okay, I would have to say valuation, and I do know that one of the things that some of the members and town residents have complained about is the valuation for some properties that they feel have, the value should be higher than what it's coming in at, and then the opposite as well. Some people were getting work done, they're not pulling permits and different things like that, so it's impacting their, you know, their properties.
Thank you. So the other question that I had was with regard to certifications. I know you don't currently have them, but if you were given this position, could you have those completed within, say, one or two years? I think two years is the required amount of time.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Back to playing that game with the mute button, so we don't get the two laptops, cameras. Okay. All right, then, so Ms. Roberts, any questions?
I have no questions for Mrs. Teal. I just wanted to thank her for applying to the position, and that's all. I wanted to really thank her for stepping up to serve our community.
Okay, and Ms. Teal, you addressed my questions through Mr. Cavy's questions, so thank you very much. Is there any closing you'd like to make before the board, before we move on for a vote?
Yes, I would just like to say that I am very dedicated in whatever it is that I attempt to do. I don't work as closely in the assessing office as I did when I was, you know, in the tax collector's office, but I, I do have some, you know, full knowledge of exactly what they do, what it entails. I just haven't obviously jumped in and, you know, both feet. But it is something that I am very interested in and would be totally dedicated to.
Okay, thank you. So with those presentations being made, is there anyone who'd like to make a motion for either of the candidates? Mr. Carrara?
I'd like to make a nomination of Rick Hill to fill the position.
Okay, there's a nomination for Rick Hill. Is there any other nominations to be made? Ms. Roberts, I don't see any. Would you like to make another nomination, or anybody speak up now, or I'm going to close the nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
All right, motion's been made and seconded to close the nominations. So with that, I'll call for a vote. It looks like that all we've got to do is, it's all in favor of Mr. Hill. Mr. Cavy?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay?
Chairman, you're probably going to say the same thing I was going to say. Go ahead. Well, I don't want to stir your thunder, but, but, Ms. Teal, your qualification is extraordinary and could be extremely well-used in our community. We have a lot of different projects going on, and even though this one didn't work out, I just wanted to ask that if, if we need you in the future, I certainly hope that you'll be available for us, because, as I said, your qualifications could really help our community in a meaningful way. So I thank you for applying, but, but also, I don't, I don't want to lose you. I want to, I want to see you get involved, and I hope that we're able to, to come up with something that will, will work for you as well. So I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I told you it would. Ms. Teal, all I'd say is just hang loose. You know, circle the airport a couple times, and we'll get you a runway. How's that?
Sounds good.
Yes. Ms. Roberts?
I wanted to also say to Ms. Teal again, your background is very impressive, and I also an advocate for minorities stepping up, especially in a tough department like the assessors' department. The unfortunate thing is that the, it's so small. It's, it's a three-man crew, and with Mr. Hill completing another term, term of someone else, and he's right in the middle of getting certification, and this, this, the revaluation year, it's going to be really, really hard. And that's the reason I went that way, but you are so impressive, and please hang around because there are more things to come that we could use your talents. So I hope you understand that. Thank you.
I do, absolutely. And when I heard him, I said, oh, gee, I should just get off right now.
I'm glad you didn't. You are strong in your area, so thank you for that.
But, but thank you, I appreciate that. And I'm here, I'm, I'm here to, you know, assist the, the community, so it's, I've been in a municipality since 2008, so I, I enjoy the work.
That's a long time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. So on the rest of these, just looking...
Library trustees. It's almost you could pass one motion.
Yeah, yeah. What I'd probably do is vote them individually, but, you know, just do it real quick, so that we do address each of them. Library trustees, there's, that's the same thing, that's, that is it, right, Steve? Thank you.
Call 101.
So, yeah, it, so what we will do, there's one last board that, that has the, it is for two spots for three-year terms, and there are three applicants. So that would be library trustees. So what I will do is ask for the candidates for the library trustees, and Mr. Levinson, are you with us?
Thank you.
Good night, Rick. Thank you. Mr. Levinson, are you with us online? Okay, and Mr. Levinson is not in the hall. Okay, so then I will go to Ms. Sewick. I see you sitting there eagerly awaiting. Let's, what should we, should we do it, do that again?
I think so.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I've seen you dragging share over to read to the kids, right? Are you going to read to us? You're going to read to us now? I'm afraid of what you'd read us.
...in the library, the chairs had holes in them, and a little kid went, put his head through, and he was so upset, he couldn't get it back out. So I had to take the hole, pick the kid up, and the chair...
Pick back up your cell phone, Cam.
No kidding.
Do you need a mic?
No, we're going to try it again and see if they can, yeah, just yell towards this way, and I, did we? Okay. Let's, let's see. Yell it in there. Ms. Roberts, can you hear Ms. Sewick?
Can you hear me? I can hear you a little bit, Ms. Sewick, of library trustee. I am currently a trustee, a very proud one. I know that the townspeople should be so proud of their library. One of the things I want to highlight tonight is the things that we're able to do during COVID. When I checked with other libraries in the areas, and I did, they weren't doing anything. Some of them were closed. We were having programs online, by Zoom, the programs were so diverse. We had books being put on the porch that people could order and come and pick up. I was in the park until a snow fell, telling stories. But my background is diverse. I have a bachelor's and a master's in a CAGS in early childhood from University of New Hampshire and Richwater State College. I was a public school teacher, and I had a preschool for 51 years in the town. I'm also a town meeting rep. I served on the school committee, I was chair at one point, and I'm active in all committees that are involved with education in the library. It is my lifeblood, so to speak. If I'm not home, I'm usually at the library. So any questions that you might want to ask me?
Okay, Ms. Roberts, do you have any questions of Ms. Sewick?
No, sir, I do not.
And why can't I hear you now? There we go. I saw your lips moving, I didn't hear a voice.
No, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gito?
None. Thank you.
Mr. Carrara?
Speech for itself, I have none.
Mr. Cavy?
I do have a question, I'll ask this.
Sure, go ahead.
I just curious to know, libraries have been around for a while sometimes.
Yes.
But they have always been able to adapt to new needs of communities, of town, of our time. And my question is, you know, given your experience with libraries and education, what is on the horizon for libraries? What do you think is the next thing we are going to have to adjust to?
Well, I think it's a, it's a community center. Right now, we're a cooling place for people that don't have air, and they can come in. Right now, we've adapted with technology. We have eBooks that you can borrow.
Right now, we've adapted with technology. We have eBooks that you can borrow. The kids can borrow games for their little gizmos that they have at home. So I think that we will be really, really more relevant in the coming years because of our technology. And our, we have homework programs for children, so they can come in and get help with their homework. I think books will take a different form, but we'll always have something in print. We have newspapers online right now, so that you don't have to actually buy them or come into the library to use them. You can read them online, and we have subscriptions, so patrons can read them online. These are things that are of the 21st century-type activities that libraries will be doing. And I don't think we'll be less relevant. I think we'll be more relevant in the 21st century. As we, people will always want to educate themselves. And I find that just even as a storyteller reading children's books, I find words that I didn't know before. I think that anybody that wants to continue their education can do it through the library. And that's, sometimes they weren't great at school, or they didn't have a great success. But we have programs like, just an example, Gary Highlander, he does history programs. And anybody that did history in high school, they said, ugh, dull, dull, dull. This man brings it alive. And people have commented that they learn more just from hearing one session at the library than they did in their whole education, maybe in school. So I think we will tap into all the talent that is around and bring it into the library we do now. If you look at the list of programs that we're offering now, it's astounding. I just, I have no way to begin to tell you. And it goes from zero to 100. I'd like to pay tribute to Barbara Cannon, who will be 101 in November. She is our ex officio trustee. She still attends meetings, even though she doesn't vote, she attends. And this lady goes through books. We have to supply her. She's 101 years old, and she's still reading books, big ones, that we supply her with. So it's a great place. So if anybody hasn't taken advantage of it, please do.
Thank you very much. Dr. Patricia Niles Randolph, are you with us? Dr. Patricia Niles Randolph, applying for the library trustees, are you with us? Okay, well, it sounds like our interviews are done. So with that, Ms. Roberts?
Are you taking motions now?
Yes.
Okay. I recommend Ms. Peggy Sewick, please.
Okay, motion made for Ms. Sewick. Is there any other nominations?
Two nominations?
Yes. Okay, motion's made for Mr. Harvey Levinson and Ms. Peggy Sewick. Are there any other nominations to be made? Okay, where this is two, all right, motion made to close the nominations, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Carrara?
Aye.
Mr. Gito? Okay, motion is closed. So now we will call for the votes, so I will go with the nomination as item A. Harvey Levinson, in favor of Mr. Levinson. Mr. Gito? Mr. Carrara?
Aye.
Mr. Cavy?
Aye.
Ms. Roberts?
Aye.
And the chair votes in favor. Mr. Levinson is reappointed. On the appointment of Peggy Sewick, Mr. Gito?
Aye.
Mr. Carrara?
Aye.
Mr. Cavy?
Aye.
Ms. Roberts?
Aye.
And the chair votes in favor, unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Sewick. It's great to have you back. Well, thank you. Thank you for what you've done, because the library wouldn't be what it is unless you were there, and it takes all you folks. Thank you very much for everything you do. Okay, so on the remainder of these appointments, where they are all identified, and there is one position, so what I will do is I will name the boards and the commissions, the person's name. If anybody opposes these, I will ask for one vote in favor or against, and we'll move on. So on commissions and disability, is there anyone who has any questions on the applicant? Okay, on the community preservation committee, one applicant, Mr. Barrett. Are there any questions on that? Counsel on aging, we have two for three periods, Mary Ann Walsh and Jane Desburg. Is there any questions of any members of the board? On the council on aging, we have Lisa Lippert. Are there any questions from any members of the board?
Yes, Mr. Jim.
Okay, yes, Ms. Roberts?
I recently emailed that she withdrew her nomination.
I missed that one. Okay, okay, then. All right, so that's on that one, then. So then we did that. Open space committee, Lisa Lippert on open space committee. Is there any question? withdrew on that one as well? Okay. All right, I'll do better to get those off. We have planning board, Daniel Kelly.
I have an issue with that, and it's not that I don't think that Mr. Kelly is a very nice person.
Okay?
But I am quite frankly very concerned with the planning board's actions in terms of the downtown, as I mentioned in terms of the open spaces. I think that that is an absolute critical piece for the development of the downtown and for the economic activity in the downtown and social activity. And I cannot, I understand how the planning board could have taken the master plan, which Mr. Kelly and I were on, the master plan. And just sort of throw that out without, without at least coming back to the board and saying, here's what we are. I mean, I would recommend that we.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak, please?
On, on what the thought process of the board before.
Okay, well, Mr. Kelly is on the line, so if you want to ask questions of Mr. Kelly. Okay, so, Mr. Kelly, you with us?
I am, yeah.
No, no, well, you have a right to ask a question of a candidate, and if you would like to ask Mr. Kelly, he is with us here. What we're asking for, and you did when I said if anyone has any questions on these candidates, you did. So Mr. Kelly's here, and I would suggest you ask Mr. Kelly directly, so he can respond to you, your question. Mr. Kelly, Mr. Gito has a question for you. Okay. Mr. Gito?
Mr. Kelly, I reiterate what I said before. I enjoyed serving with you on the master planning committee. I have a tremendous amount of respect for the fact that you are a wonderful family man. My concern is how the planning board could have ever decided that they should put six-story buildings, apparently reduced to five now, in the post office location, when in fact the master plan indicated that that was going to be sort of a linchpin for the economic and social development of the downtown. And if, if you weren't, you know, if you were going to change it, would the, the use of that space, it would seem to me that you'd want to create park space, because the post office is not paying any taxes to the town at the present time. So those are my questions.
Okay, the, we've tried to put together a new zoning bylaw to get rid of the existing schmooed that is, that is there downtown now. That, that existing overlay district does not work. So in the process of trying to do that, we've also tried to create entirely new zoning for the downtown. Within that zoning, we've, we've created different zones of the downtown, with this three different layers of zoning. So we have a central business district, we have a lesser than that, and we have a transition zone to the residential. In each one of these areas, different buildings and different retail and residential requirements are part of that. In the central business district, you are correct, there's a six-story provision that actually could be used. That provision takes into account, it is not a by right provision. It is something that has to be done by special permit. It also has to be that there is requirements that they have to meet that would help with the downtown area, that the developer would have to input some sort of public, you know, entity or public help into the downtown in order to be able to do that. So it's not a long shot of just an automatic six-story. But what it does do is it gives an incentive to people to try to build downtown. That was just a, it was one point of, it's one point of an entire zoning code that you've put out that is right now is very, very comprehensive down to the type of signage, down to the types of buildings that we do, and very much does incorporate the master plan. Now, as far as the, the post office goes, Mr. Gito, I cannot comment on all of my knowledge for the post office only for the fact that I've sat in executive sessions concerning the post office, and I'm bound not to be able to open those up. And unless somebody from this board or an attorney from the town can tell me what I can do and what I can say, and what I can't say about the post office, I can't say anything about that. I'm sorry about that, but I can't, I can't respond to that at this point in time, because I'm bound by the executive session. Therefore, where we are with the post office and where we are with the zoning is what I can do. But the zoning does not prohibit putting green space or anything else into those areas, the new zoning that we're doing. It actually tries to enhance all of that. If I could put a lawn and put the green space in, as we've discussed before, and part of the master plan, I would absolutely do that, and I fought for that, but this zoning does not preclude that not happening. And, but it does prove, it does allow certain things to happen within the central business district in order to entice development that is right now is stagnant and is not happening in the downtown, and that's what we're trying to do. We get rid of the overlay district, we get, we get rid of the confusion of the districts of what can be allowed and what can't be allowed. We allow smaller square footages for the lots to be built on, instead of trying to build a development of 10,000 square foot, which no, no lots exist for 10,000 square feet downtown. We're allowing smaller lots, so people can actually develop these buildings and make this happen. That's the whole idea behind the zoning, is a comprehensive incentive to be able to develop our downtown. Right now, the downtown is just, it's the blight of where we are, and without getting something to spur that going forward, it's never going to happen. So that's what we're trying to do with this right now. The initial thing is let's get some development going downtown. It requires green spaces part of these developments. It requires us to get, to get people to get, you know, put energy part of it in. It requires a whole different thing if you're reading comprehensive and put together what we're doing with this downtown proposal. It actually requires everybody to work together for that to happen.
Thank you. I was most specific about the, the post office property being sort of a linchpin for development in, in that area, in the, in the block of Wyman, Washington, and Portus Street, and including the railroad station and that as well. And Mr. Gito? I hear what you said about your not being able to speak about it. I think I understand a little bit about what's going on there. And perhaps I also heard you say that, that you would be supportive of green space in that area. Am I incorrect?
I am not, Mr. Gito, I am not opposed to green space in that area. I'm not opposed to doing that. There's actually, there is proposals and different things out there for that to happen, but again, I can't discuss.
Thank you. I understand.
Mr. Cavy, on your point of information?
Yeah, on April 13th of this year, the board voted to release to the public all executive session minutes related to potential purchase of the post office. And that was voted unanimously with one intention. There's no conversation, executive session conversation, they can't be discussed in public now. So I know that Mr. Kelly may not be aware of that, but I wanted to make him aware of that, but you're not bound by, by that anymore.
Does that extend to the committee that I was on, Mr. Cavy?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And Mr. Gito, if that's the case, we tried very hard to be able to get the post office. There was proposals to try to purchase the post office, to relocate the post office. There was money spent to try to discuss things with the post office. All of those proposals at this point in time are, don't exist. The post office is not negotiating with us, so there is not much we can do with the post office until such time that we can come up with a plan that they are acceptable to and the town is acceptable to, both financially and logistically, that it's going to make it happen. So, and to be honest with you, that's the bottom line.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrara? No questions. Okay, Mr. Cavy?
No questions.
Ms. Roberts, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and the chair has no questions. Okay, so with that, this is becoming a real hassle.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I do have a point of order, and.
Go ahead, Ms. Roberts, your point of order?
Mr. Corrin sent us a message and indicated that we did not name Ms. Anne Madera for the Commission on Disabilities. We didn't call her by name. We just called the.
Okay, I will add that. Thank you for that point of order. I thought I did get them all, but I'm juggling between two laptops trying to run this meeting. But, Michael, thank you. So I will add the Commission on Disabilities, Anne Madera, as well, to that list. So with that, Ms. Roberts, you had no questions of Mr. Kelly, am I correct?
No questions for Mr. Kelly.
All right, so on the, oh my God, I'm going to jump off a bridge in a minute. Make some people happy, but I'm not going to do it. So on the appointments of, and I will, if anybody opposes any of these, please. What's that? I have Dan Pessia and Jack. That is, yeah, I've got them right here, so. All right, so what I will do, let's just go just to be sure. Commission on Disabilities, Anne Madera. Community Preservation Commission, Michael Barrett. Counsel on Aging, Mary Ann Walsh and Jane Desburg. And on the Council on Aging was not. Library, we did. Open Space, that's not. Mr. Kelly from the Planning Board. Zoning Board of Appeals for a five-year term, Dan Pessia. Zoning Board of Appeals, alternate, for one appointment, Mr. Jack Leary. And those are the appointments. So on those, I will ask for a motion to vote those members as named to the relevant commissions. With that, Mr. Cavy? Go ahead.
I have a question.
Sure.
I want anything else. We have two positions on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I have one applicant, and we have a full time. I know the application was for alternate, but does it make sense to offer the opportunity to take the zoning position?
What I would do now is like to vote it that way and double-check with the zoning board. There may be a reason that there was not one there, I don't know, but if that's the case, at a subsequent meeting, we can just put that to recognize that from the alternate position to the full-time. I just wouldn't do anything that I don't have the background on right now. Scott, you got background?
Zoning board for five years. Some people start like I did, as alternate. You can't thrust them into a main position, because you've got to learn the rules regularly, and there's a lot to it. Took me like two years, and then they, they still pull the win on cases. Like if somebody doesn't show up as a regular member, and you've served two, two times on that case, you're on. Whether that person comes back or not, you are on it until it runs its time out. So it might be putting somebody into a position that might be over their head, might not be, but I wouldn't just automatically say they were driving.
First, to your experience, I think, thank you very much.
I was thinking the same thing. There may be a reason that Mr. Leary applied for that, reapplied for that versus the other one. So, but again, if, if he's ready for it, I will just put it on a subsequent meeting and vote it through. So, but again, if he's ready for it, I will just put it on a subsequent meeting and vote it through.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So on those appointments, as I presented them, Ms. Roberts, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carrara, any questions? Mr. Guido, any questions?
No.
Okay, so on the motion for the appropriate people named to the committees, Mr. Guido.
Yes, and I would vote yes, Mr. Kelly as well.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, and we have Mr. Carrara.
Yes.
Mr. Kaby?
I vote yes, also in that we didn't have second on that motion, I just seconded.
I believe, Ms. Roberts, did you second that motion?
Oh, I will second that motion.
Okay, I thought you did.
To accept this plea, yes.
Okay, no, thank you, I thought you did, that's why I didn't move on with that. Okay, and Ms. Roberts, on your vote?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor, so it's unanimous vote for those people. And I would thank everybody who's applied to the boards and commissions. With the exception of Mr. Hill that makes a little bit of money, you know, they don't get paid for the reference. Maybe we should have Mr. Hill just pay for the coffee and even that out. But most of these positions are volunteers, we all know, and in some of our cases, we've been here, you know, back to when the cavemen were here. So it's, we keep fighting. So thank you to everybody for their interest. Okay, so that puts us on to item six. It's the Thea Agreement. And it says votes may be taken. So with that, Madam Town Manager.
Yep, this is the formality vote. Basically, the MOA had been approved by the board. Town meeting voted to support this agreement, and this is just the finalization of the approval.
Okay, is there a motion to be made?
Meeting, I mean, motion to approve.
To finalize the contract?
Yes.
Motion's been made to finalize the contract, is there a second? Mr. Kaby seconds the motion. Any questions of the board? Mr. Guido?
I'm going to abstain, I haven't seen.
Okay. Deborah, would you please note Mr. Guido is abstaining from the vote? Okay, any other questions of the board? Mr. Carrara? Yes or no? You vote no?
No, no, no.
Okay, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, okay, all right, I'm sorry. You're right. This has been one of those meetings, you know? Why don't you try running two laptops at the same time? All right, so questions, then, I'm sorry. Mr. Kaby, questions? Okay, Ms. Roberts, any questions?
No questions.
And now on the vote, Mr. Guido.
He's abstaining.
Abstaining. Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Carrara votes yes. Mr. Kaby?
Yes.
Mr. Kaby votes yes. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts votes yes, and the chair votes yes, that passes.
Thank you, and thank you to our Thea staff who have stepped up tremendously during COVID and kept town hall operations.
They sure have, they sure have. Okay, now, there's four gentlemen sitting at the back of the room, and you can tell they just can't wait to get this going. So I see four people, I don't know if we're going to need all four people, but I'd say the principals of the business, if you want to come forward. And you've got to come right up and sit in this little bring a chair with you. Now, these are all principals of the business? These are the people here every day, running owns the business, runs the business?
The ones with Arundel and Colder.
Okay, do you own the business?
Yes.
Okay, and these gentlemen are who?
Assistant director.
Okay. Okay, okay. All right, so let's get down to, it takes me a minute. Okay. No, you're kidding me, we love this stuff, we look forward to it. We're just getting going.
Still early.
That's right.
I stay at the board meetings, it's still.
Kidding me, we're not going past 10 o'clock, I'll tell you that. All right, so we do.
I'm here till 2:00 in the morning.
Yeah, well, you won't be here, or not on the select board, you won't be anymore, you'll be by yourself. Yeah.
Two is pretty regular.
Okay. So, yeah, we should send off a beers again. Okay, so, okay, I'm looking at the application permit checklist, and I don't see anything unchecked there. Oh, this is a public hearing first, I want to turn in a motion to open the public hearing. Motion made and seconded. Mr. Guido?
Yes.
Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Kaby?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. All right, you want to go through the, you got the whole thing printed out there? Do you want to go through and present the application, and then we'll get to our, yes? Yes.
The public hearing will be held by the select board on Tuesday, July 6, 2021, at 8:00 PM in the Grayville 3rd Florida Town Hall, Centerville Street, Stoughton, Mass. For a Class II license for Platinum Car Sales Inc. at 1873 Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass. It's per order of Chairman Joseph McChristie. The applicants are Platinum Car Sales. There's a checklist here that's all checked off, that says they have a contact sheet, application workers' comp insurance sheet, affidavit, that's the state tax that they pay. They advertise, there's a floor plan, parking plan, deed to the property, providing a lease. Surety bond. And in the select board office, the building and zoning, it says it's an existing non-conforming use, and it wasn't abandoned, so it continues on. Treasurer and collector's office had no problems. Fire department had some issues, but did you straighten them out?
Yep.
And police department was okay, and water was going to put in a new meter.
All set.
And they have, on the workers' comp, they say they have no employees, and they're waiving the rights of their own to have workers' comps, so that's why it doesn't show.
Okay. Okay, so that's it. So we'll go down, now why don't you give us an idea? And if you could address, when I'm looking at your parking plan, is, that is not what's been historically at that location, that parking plan. It's double that. Okay, so we need to address that tonight. Okay, so if you could put in there the history of the location, right? And where you're showing basically half the parking plan. And historically, that place has been jam-packed. Okay, so address that in how you're going to be moving forward. I would add, you're transferring this license, you're moving on. This is the landlord who's going to be responsible to this gentleman in the middle. And so if you could just tell us who you are for the record, and whoever wants to give historically, you know, the use of the building, and how that's going to change, and then we'll go into the board members on some questions, okay? So what I need to do is a mic check. Ms. Roberts, if you guys could just stop talking, or somebody say, give me a count of 10 or something. Ms. Roberts, if you can hear our petitioners at home?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so identify yourself for the records, please.
Hey, my name is Alex Uggie. I'm currently the holder of the license in Stoughton. And I got a little bit unfortunate that I got the license in February 2020, right, basically two weeks before the COVID. And I lost my employees, you know, I had to lay the mortgage, and the company was new. I didn't qualify for any government aid. So I kind of struggled, but I still, you know, honored the lease that we had. And I've been trying to, you know, build up the business and sell it because it wasn't financially viable for me to, you know, bust, to operate on my own. And as you know, the labor market took, you know, a hit, and we're well aware of the economic situation. Car industry is not seeing its best times right now. It's a shortage of computer chips, and, you know, there is not enough cars on the second-hand market as well. So when I applied for license, I had to literally clean up the situation that the previous tenants had. And I think there were, you know, several legal issues. Police was there almost every day. They used to sell cars without a title, and I had to actually, had an interview with the police department for them to qualify me. So since then, I kept it for 18 months in a good space, not a single complaint or, you know, dispute or illegal issues. And I think the lot looks much better. Before, it was a lot of abandoned cars, so I had to tow it away. Some of them, as if you look in Google Maps, there's some of the street view images from like 2010 or 11 where it's like tractor trailers and all other like big holes and stuff. They didn't look quite good, but we painted the building inside and planning to do some renovations outside. We painted the parking spot for customers and employees in there, and we did some landscaping. So, I mean, it's getting together. The guys had the plan to put a beautiful sign, obviously, with the permission of the town hall, because now it's blank, and it needs some, we need to change the pace of the construction. And before, if you remember, it allowed, based on my information, it used to be a new dealership back in the 60s, 70s, and then, uh, speed dealership.
Right.
Right, that's right. And since then, it was repurposed, you know, half of the building is a repair shop, you know, half of the office is a dealership. We have a little bay in there that we're aware we're not supposed to do a cleaning or oil change and stuff like that, which we don't, because of the conservation creek in the back. And I think the health department didn't have a conservation department, didn't have any issues with moving there. The new applicants, they, we discussed that, and they're aware of this transition as well. The parking lot itself, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, probably could fit 150 cars in there. But the proposed plan is for the license, number of cars in the license that bring up right now. And I applied for the new license since the previous tenant posted due to several violations, I think. Even the state had guilty of dealer plate, Section 5 of registered motor vehicles. And it was just historically there, in the Google Maps. We're not asking for double, we're just asking for what it was, and it's really just a half society working.
But since the duty clause, there's huge containers.
Right.
Yeah. We have cleaned that place for them.
Okay, I don't see in here the actual count of vehicles.
This is supposed to be 47 spots and five parking spots for customers, five parking spots.
Yeah, but the second plan has. Yeah, I see that, but it doesn't have a number, it just shows spots. So if we're going to, I have no problem going with that. But again, you know, if you look at the rest of the lot, there's a lot of empty lot there. Okay, historically, what's that?
There's a big space.
There is, all right, so that big space is always going to be there now, right? It's not like it's going to be.
Well, they get conservation.
Yeah, okay, well, that was there before too.
I know.
That was there before too, so, you know, to say that is irrelevant because, you know, that place was jam-packed, okay? So, so. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, I said it wasn't jam-packed, it was moved there for a patient.
No, I mean, I go by that a lot, okay? And at times, you couldn't fit a car on that lot anywhere if you wanted to. So you're showing basically a little less than half of the entire property empty. So we're going to see that, but when we drive by, we're going to see basically halfway into that lot, and then that all the way up towards the corner is going to be nothing. Okay, so what we're going to do, I would, I would hope as we go along, as we go through our questions, is to put a number associated with the license. We've been doing that recently. We did do that with one on 38, we did it another one. And I think we should be doing that so that we don't have this, well, I'm working on this for that guy, and I'm working on this for that guy, and it basically becomes a repair facility slash, you know, and we're not doing that. Okay, so, yeah, okay. So I don't see a number, so I can see the employee parking is designated, and that's five spaces. And then in the front, I can't see that that well, just so that everybody is on the same page when we do this in case we have to come back and visit this later on. Customer parking is one, two, three, four, five spaces as well. And the reason I say that is I can't count how many times I've driven by and all you have, you have vehicles on the edge of the road. Okay, so they're outside defense line. I mean, I've seen that with my own two eyes, so don't tell me I didn't see it, okay? Sure.
So there is a repair facility next door to us, which is completely different. It's 1873B, right?
Yeah, it's on the right hand side.
Yeah, on the right-hand side. We would never park cars on the side of the road, but they do.
Okay, well, we have the landlord here. Okay, so, you know, and again, I guess what, just take it, we're not going to, this is your license, we're going to act on the license. But we have you sitting here. I can assure you that if that continues to go on, that repair facility, and if that big lot that's there now showing empty, this is your piece of property now, you're telling us tonight that all out back there is going to be empty. Okay, if we see, I will, we have a zoning enforcement person right now. The next time I see myself, because I will see it if it's there, if I see cars beyond, on the outside of the fence, in the, in the outside, on the edge of the road, you know, we're going to take action on that, we have to.
I hope you do, because I can't be there and give them tickets, because I cannot do that all the time.
Okay, well, yeah, well, ultimately, you're the landlord, okay? So it's your property, it won't be them, it's going to be your property. Okay, so if it's their vehicle, that vehicle will get ticketed. But, you know, just so that we have you here and we just make it clear, because, you know, that property has been jam-packed. By allowing 47 cars, it concerns me that it may become 57 cars. So, you know, and if we have to send somebody down and start saying, oh, hey, who owns this one? Who owns that one?
I think this is a ticket to people who park there, because they are not parking.
Okay, okay, no, I know, we're here to talk about that, but I'm just saying, well, you're here tonight, you're the, so on this, then, the, that is 47 cars, correct, on those two parking spaces?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, if I may add something.
Mm-hmm.
So the process of the dealer plate applications for Section 5 of registered motor vehicles requires the state troopers to come to the property and inspect the lot and count the parking numbers, the town issues. So with that in mind, they can show up any time, and it's actually enforceable by the state.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
I'm just making sure that in our license application and the vote we take accordingly is very well thought as well. So I want to count these here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. I count 46, is that what you had?
There is one more right at the edge, it doesn't have the right, it was 47.
Okay, all right, I read it, I looked at it differently, okay? Okay, so 47, okay then. All right, so with that, so tell us a little about the business, how are you going to change it? How's it going to be different? And what you're going to be doing on the site? Identify yourself as well, your name and.
My name is Cooper Hysick. So we're doing, basically, what is the number that we're going to have 47 cars as on the permit? We're not going to be having more than that, and they're just buying the cars and selling which sets the permit to have it. Basically, later, it is simple, and slowly get more cars at higher people and get crawling. And we'll, 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 we'll just buy the permit.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, okay, very good. So with that, I'll open up questions, and I see Ms. Roberts put her hand up. Ms. Roberts, you can lead us off, ma'am.
Oh, yes, I had a questions for the new potential owners. It was right in line with your questioning, Mr. Chairman, about parking spaces. It says five employee parking, five employee parking spaces. But then when I looked at the worker's compensation affidavit, it's. But then when I looked at the uh workers' compensation affidavit, it's checked off number three that says we are a corporation and its officers have exercised their right of exemption. We have no employees. So uh if you could just help me understand five and five employee parking spaces, but workers' compensation says you have no employees.
Okay, so you you understand the question. You show five employee parking spaces, but on your workman's comp, you say you have no employees. Do you have employees right now?
Yes, I didn't start my business. So once I start my business, I will be starting finding people, right people and finding right cars slowly and all type of that.
Mister Chairman, I could not hear him.
Uh, yeah, you gotta speak up. Deborah, the petitioner said that right now they do not have employees and they are, when they do uh that would fit there, but what we'll have to do is have to have a safety mechanism to know uh when the um updated the workman's comp is is filed. Right now, they have no employees, but you're correct, they show five employee parking spaces.
Okay, thank you, Mister Chairman, and thank you.
Okay, so with that, um here with me one sec, Madam Town Manager, how would we assure that, uh you know, to know that the um, I don't know how we can do that on our end, on knowing how they would.
Yeah, that really is not a municipal function per se. That's governed more uh at a different level.
Alright, so I think what we would want, um with all due respect, you're gonna transfer this license, you're not gonna be able to do anything here, so let me ask really the applicant. Um will you give us your word here tonight, when you hire the the employees, that you will update your workman's comp certificate to show the five employees?
Well, once I hire them, I do assure them to update everything.
Okay. What's that?
Give them a six month license and then review it in six months and then turn it over into some uh permanent. That way he gets employees.
Well, then again, if he doesn't get the employees though, two in six months, that means he has to come back here for no reason. Deborah, yeah, hold on a second.
Every year, every year, you'll have to provide a workman's comp certificate every year.
Okay, okay.
I I knew that, but you were worrying about what would go on now.
Yeah, I know, no, it's about, so yeah, when they renew, we would make sure we have it. If we don't have it, you know, they'd have to show evidence and we could do it through the renewal, catch it in the renewal. So, okay.
A part of the dealer plate requires to have work.
Right, right, okay. Okay, so going through, I guess, is there Miss Roberts, uh any other questions?
No, Mister Chairman.
Okay, Mister Kaby?
I have no questions.
Mister Brower?
I'm not sure if I have questions, but it's 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 concerns. Um on this sheet that you show your parking plan and stuff, you don't show the entrances on it. And um I know you brought it.
I know you didn't brought it because nobody's names on it. There's no date on it. And one contradicts the other one. This one here is twenty ten and it shows like ten feet of space between the building and your property line, yet the new one shows that the building is over the property line. I don't know what to do on it. That's here. And when I went by there today, I don't know about that repair shop, what's going on there, but they got cars jammed up over the wall. The back end of cars are pushed over the walls. They're 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 on basically the town property, which is out of the uh the cemetery, because the cars are up over the wall because it's so jammed up in there. That's why I wanted to know how they're gonna enter in there, how he's gonna run a proper business on one side.
But there are two different issues. This is this is the mechanic shop.
One affects the other because I don't wanna come back and have a problem later with one point finger at another. But I don't feel comfortable approving this stuff when you got a, you're using plan plans to have us approve this. One's contradicting the other. You you don't have a a twenty twenty one or even a twenty twenty plan when you took over of where the actual bounds are. This is twenty ten. It's eleven years old. Come over here, I'll show you what's wrong. This Washington Street, this is where the property line, they say, there's ten feet because I did them there, right? Now, here's the one you guys are putting in, or I should say the transfer is putting in. And the property line is through about eight, almost eight feet of the building. Property line.
This is not his property. That's that's not the one that he's using. This is the property back there. Right, that's just, this is the area that is.
Over here?
Yeah.
Why do you own the whole thing?
That's, yeah, that's the whole thing. It's the property, but they they are the front and this portion of the building.
Right.
It's this is joint.
He's using part of the building. The building is partly not on the property.
But there's a separate, there's a fence here and a wall here that's separate.
You know what I'm saying? I don't wanna approve something that doesn't have a proper plan with it.
I'm 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 sure they make sure that they have a proper plan for you, but shows that.
Because in this town, we want an updated plot plan, not one from ten years ago because things change. Different guys come in. They might put the screwdriver in the ground a foot away and measure off wrong. Or the screwdriver leans and then the foot gets left. I sat on zoning, I've seen this before. I didn't approve it then, I won't approve it now. You might not need my vote tonight, but I won't vote on something that's out now wrong.
In your, excuse me, in your printed out, because it's tough going through these pages in the computer on the PDF, do you have the letter from the building inspector?
Well, yeah, alls it says from Jack is that the usage is okay because it's pre-existing non-conforming. Which means as long as it hasn't been abandoned and it hasn't been abandoned beyond two years, it might not have been in use for six months, but it doesn't, they allowed to come back because it's not been abandoned for two years.
And if I might, uh Mister Erickson did reach out to an attorney to confirm that, so that that did get.
No, that's that's what you learn on zoning. That's what it is. I own a.
No, no, confirm, yeah, yeah, he confirmed the the history of that.
Right.
Right, yeah, it um.
Will you allow clarification on that? Because I was involved with this plan. Um I'm an architect by degree, so I know how to CAD and I spoke with Deborah, right? And I asked if it has to be formal stamped or certified and I told that it would be not a hand drawing, but you know, some kind of representation from Google, Google Maps maybe in schematic like parking spots. So I pulled it from the, I guess, I guess, did have, you know, the official site.
The reason, the reason why they ask for a a stamped one is because you're selling to him. And if it ain't right for him, he's gonna fix it later, not you, him. So we straighten it out now. I don't wanna be back here later trying to straighten that out.
I have an issue.
And I think on this one, though, the applicant's, uh it seems that the questionable property is on the uh the auto repair.
He's using the building.
Right, but but again.
We're voting on a whole plot plan.
Right, yeah, well, we're not. We're voting on the plan that's before us for the applicant's used car.
I'm not, I'm not splitting hairs.
Okay, well, okay, no, I'm just saying.
I'm just trying to tell you that it's it's the whole plan is right. You can't be half pregnant.
No, I understand, but again, you know, this is two people, so you know, two people can't be pregnant for one guy at the same time either, so. Right, you know, put it that way. I mean, I understand what you're saying. I I'm not saying you're wrong.
It's such a precedence.
No, no, it doesn't. No, it doesn't.
Next person that comes in to do the same thing, hey, I'm only gonna use this piece over here. I'm not gonna twenty one E the whole place. I'm only using that corner.
I understand what you're saying, but there are two uses, there are two addresses there, so it's two different businesses.
I'm just going with my experience of sitting on another board in this town and how things go.
Scott, we we argue all the time.
I know.
The difference of opinion, you know, that's all. And and I think we 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 wanna do the right thing, this is both of us, but uh there's a difference on this, so. Okay, all right then. So Lou, questions?
It seems to me we've got the uh the person who owns the property here. We should have a plan that shows the entire property and I guess my I would agree with Scott's view on uh on the application that in fact the uh the whole plan should be shown. And it seems to me that you have two owners, one of whom seems like they want to do a good job. And there's somebody else on some undisclosed piece of property that the owner seems not to have any control in terms of making sure that that his property is running properly. So I would try to get this thing squared away as quickly as possible, but that would not be to grant a license to somebody now that uh when when you don't have all the information together. I mean, it just doesn't seem.
I agree. That's why I said what I said right up front, you know?
Egress on, you know, the the turn, the emphasis in where, you know?
But that that plan that I see, I never seen it. It's divided. We go to two thousand to the older plan that I'm on here.
Okay, and if I can, let's, I I wanna keep moving forward.
If if I might, and I and I'm not taking a a position, I I am just saying that when we, the the applicant did come in, they spoke with Mister Tisdale about the property and environmental concerns and all of that. We we did not ask for a plan having to do anything with the repair shop as the purview of this license as far as our concern was, was the current applicant. So if it has to the applicant, we told them, indicated they would need to produce a parking plan, which is typical for this type of use. So I I defer to the board. I don't know where we wanna go with it, but I'm just letting you know that that we did not ask for both businesses to provide a plan as they are separated.
I'm not, I'm not asking for both businesses to supply the plan. I'm asking for the owner. They gotta supply a plan of the whole piece of property that you can't show half of a verified property for only use over here. You have to show the whole property, you have to show the egress and the and the digress of going in and out, how it's gonna happen. Who's gonna enter your side? Because you don't want them coming into your your side and leaving cars leaking and falling apart and then saying, oh, he's gonna tow it over there.
If I make, if I make this, this is the plan that I, if you look at this, you buy the, this is a marketing.
I go, I I see this property. I go by there all the time. And I see, and I, I know. I know, I know. I know what you're talking about.
Okay, uh let's let's move forward because I I agree with my colleagues on where we're going, as I said when we started, we have dealing with the landlord here now. And if we if we go back and and tweak what we get, at least we're getting a better finished product. I mean, I I agree with that, okay? Because what we're still doing is, you know, the property has been a concern to I can't speak to my colleagues, but people have shared their feelings as well. So I don't think anybody's opposed to the to the license, but we just wanna make sure we know exactly what we're getting and where you're gonna be and where the other person is. It's your responsibility. Show us how this property is managed before we put it, I mean, I will side with my colleagues right now is to, I probably won't vote for a permit tonight, you know, until we come back and get a detailed plan so we know where your tenant A is and where your tenant B is. So we understand where we're putting this use, okay? So I'm gonna keep moving on. Mister Kaby, questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mister, but I wait, this is, I never seen this plan with.
Okay, well, that's not a good thing to say. I haven't seen this plan before you. Where'd that come from?
That was presented.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so but again, here's the landlord saying the people who own this property that have never seen that plan before, so. Okay, okay, but again, that doesn't show egress, that doesn't show the layout of the land, so I I'm siding with my colleagues. You know, on this side right now, I'm not done going to the other two colleagues. Miss Roberts is here, uh so what I'm gonna do is keep moving forward. Mister Kaby, questions?
I don't have any questions, but I I uh agree that I postpone it of this public hearing from from its normal sense of everything involved.
Yeah.
Actually, it'd be a continuance.
Yeah.
Yeah, so fair enough. Um so the um the question is, when when we.
Well, we um will meet when we need to, put it that way. It um as we've said before, we don't wanna go back to the old days when we're here every week and just beat the horse to death. Uh the quicker they can get that plan back into us, it'll get right on the agenda. So.
I will make a motion.
Yes, thank you. Alright, so Miss Roberts, questions?
I ask my question.
Okay, all right, so with that, um we will, um I guess what you'll do, you're gonna make a motion, Mister Kaby? I'm sorry, oh, Mister Mister Gito does have a question now. Yes, Mister Gito.
There was concern about a two thousand and ten plan. Is there any more recent plan that you have of the property?
This is, this is the plan that we presented. This it's subdivided, but it's it's marked that then property entrance.
So so when we get a plan back, it will be the same basic plan, the two thousand and ten plan with any other information that needs to be shown. All I'm trying to do is get a sense of what we're likely to get when you submit the rest of the information so that we we all have the same expectations. That's that's all.
The fact that I see this confusion is there's one demarcated, there's a separation between the two buildings, one there is not, and that's called the confusion. And I'll, that's that's.
No, the confusion is that's twenty ten.
It's the same.
The confusion, yes, it is. The one he submitted that he took off of Google, which shows difference. It shows that you don't have what is shown on the twenty ten plan. Just because he marked it up and says there's a fence there and all that, I understand that. You don't think I understand that? What I'm trying to figure out is how it shows the building is on off the property and why you don't have any entrance shown.
I'm I'm.
How you can answer.
I've been told to give a drawing of this and I decided to make a nice an unprofessional plan, just the way I use this form. I've been told I can bring a Google screenshot, but I tried to make it.
This is a plot plan I worked on. This he, I wasn't aware of it. He just presents this based on, I have no idea what, but that is the plot plan and I saw it by the measure perfectly for the line between the two properties. And there's two different entrance that shows which which property is the entrance, there's a fence there, there's always. It is that plan, plan that we represented, I don't think it's valid.
Okay.
And it should not be, I'll take that up. But that is, that's a plot plan, official plot plan that I presented to you on two thousand and ten. And nothing has changed. No addition, no subtraction. Everything is the same. There's a fence there. There's a fence right at that marking. You can come to me and assure you that anybody wants to come and see.
I went by there today. I was gonna get this, but I didn't.
Okay, let's.
There's a fence there.
Can I, can I, can I finish what I want from that?
Alright, well, I think we're, I think I should, well, because all we're doing is we're playing the game.
We're not playing a game.
We're going back and forth, not producing anything. It's very simple. I understand and I agree with you, Scott. We need a plan. A detailed plan because it'll allow us to see exactly, to your point.
I know what you want when I present that because this is the official plan. I enlarge it to make sure that we see everything.
You can enlarge this all you want. I wanna see, this one here will not show his parking spaces that he's allowed to have cars on.
To put the parking spaces in that plan. Is that good?
Yes, I'm 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 not, I wanna, I I would rather see an updated one, Joe.
I agree. I totally agree. And and so it, so it shows the, it shows, because again, you're the property owner. And if we go and we allow this, which this is, you know, you're probably gonna get your license. Don't think you're not. It just may take another meeting, you know, to us to get this plan. Because again, this is part of the problem. You just happen to be renting from somebody that's over utilizing the area. We wanna see where the parking is for those vehicles, how many vehicles are there, so that we eliminate the problem with, uh I saw a a pretty good sized uh truck, bus, you know, like a a big delivery van was in there for a week, taken up the whole parking lot, and then there were cars stacked everywhere else. No, but again, it's the lot. It's the lot itself. It's being over utilized. So if we have cars that are all stacked up back, I wanna know how many cars are gonna be stacked out back. Okay, because the the lot's being over utilized. Okay, where there's so many cars coming in, and this is what's happening in this town. We have people just going in and saying, oh, I'm just fixing these cars. They're not. They're not, I don't own them, they're on my lot. Well, then they're falling over into the streets and it's not good for the integrity of the community. And we're the licensing board and we have the authority to tell you what we want to see on these lots. And to, if we're going to give you a permit that we don't have to give you, right? But we want to, I mean, I speak myself, I mean, I don't think anybody's opposed to it. But we need a plan that we're looking at. We have one that we just did on 138 a couple of years ago, we made them do the same thing. A proper plan that shows where you're going to park these cars. So that when, and this was a gas station, because what they had a problem was so much traffic on the site, people going in to get gas and there's so many cars with a gas tanker on the property, you know, you could have a severe problem. So we have a right to ask this of you. I don't think it's, me speaking, I don't think it's too much to ask. It's just, you know, unfortunately, if you guys are there, you know, it's going to take a little bit longer. But it's up to the landlord to show us how this is utilized, who uses what. Because right now, all we see is your good faith effort, you know, that you did what, you know, you said you were told you could do. But unfortunately, we're in another problem area that we need to address at the same time. And to Mr. Gito, Mr. Carr's comments, we have a right to know it. One plan does show the building off the property, I can see that. And you could see, but don't say it doesn't, the line is very clear, it shows it beyond the property line. So it has to sit on that property. Well, that's why we want you to give us a plan. Okay.
Engineers.
You altered this plan by doing, by putting those dots on it. So it's not now an engineered plan, it's an altered plan.
They requested from us to just mark where the entrance and their.
Anybody can request, we're the board.
Okay.
I got elected to protect the residents in the town and the bylaws of the town. I understand applications, I've been here nine years before. This isn't new to me. I wouldn't accept it then, I won't accept it now. It only protects that man there. That he is going to have a proper thing on fire so that when his license comes due in the next year, we look at it and everything's functioning, yet nothing's going to change. I'm not going to ask him for another plan. This is a new business. We do it to every business. That's what it is. You might think I'm being unfair, but I'm not.
Okay, Mr. KB?
Yeah, I think we have a, we have a, I know there's a confusion here, but we have one person who's requesting transfer of license. There's some additional documentation that we're looking for, I think, honestly. I hope I speak for my colleagues here. We really actually want to see, succeed, we want, but we just need some, we have responsibility, we have to fulfill, and so that's why we're obliged to do a little bit more. I know, I apologize for that, but I appreciate your willingness to cooperate with us. To that end, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing until July 20th, 2021, that's two weeks. Is that enough time for you guys to get together the things you need to make?
Does it have to be stamped, Glenn?
Updated. That would be a stamp plan. That way you have it to utilize, they accept it.
That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion, Mr. KB?
No.
Ms. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Carrera?
No.
Mr. Gito?
I just want to get clarification. Can you reduce that in the time period?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
If you want to, let us know and we'll continue again.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, so on the motion then, Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. KB?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, so as soon as you get that plan updated, get it in here. If we can do it earlier, you know, we can, we'll do a best get even early if we can do that, okay? That motion was no later then?
I think I made it July 20th.
Continue until July 20th. Well, that's right too, you have, yeah, it's only two weeks, yeah, all right. Yeah, a week and, yes, yeah, that gives us time, yeah.
And we need to continue as well.
Yeah, yeah.
If you get it done with it.
Yeah, no, like I said, we'll get it, we'll get it right on so you can get right in and right out, okay? Why don't there's somebody trying to get in the front door?
Get some big rats.
She ended up working. Be locked in there.
I think we can show it on this. This is not the first time I've, we've, we've given license from other towns in this business for 30 years. We have a plan, the same as that first time I did it. Marked where the parking would be and have more than that the other time. Push sure that this is where the car will be and we can use the same proportion, the same value that we see.
Mr. Chairman, are we moving to the next agenda item?
Not yet, there's just some back and forth talk here on getting ready for the next meeting. Okay, thank, all right, thank you for your understanding, appreciate it. Okay. Okay, that's done, okay. Okay, Ms. Roberts, review of the management plan, Mr. Rowe, you with us?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
So we voted to continue. Okay, Mr. Rowe, thank you. Ms. Roberts, the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And as always, Mr. Rowe, thank you for all your work and contributions to make this understandable.
Ms. Roberts, if you, if you would oblige me for one second?
Yes.
Would the board indulge me? Mr. Paul Alves has been sitting at the back of the room the entire night, all right? And I, well, I would, would somebody make a motion to take item C off the consent agenda out of order?
So made.
Motion made, okay, all in favor of the motion, Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. KB?
Yes.
And Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Okay. This is a consent agenda item issue, it's a one day. So, yeah. So with that, I mean, you know, Paul, you may want to just take the opportunity to announce the event and what everybody can expect and we can vote that for you.
Certainly. Good evening. My name is Paul Alves, I am the president of the St. John's Philamonia Society. I'm here today, tonight, to get the approval for a one day beer and wine license for a one day event that we'd like to hold on Saturday, August 28th, from 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM. We couldn't have our annual St. John's feast, which was a couple of weeks ago because it takes time to plan with the pandemic, we didn't know what was going to happen. So this is a short, short planning that we're doing, but I know I have the support of my group, my members and my directors and all that stuff. So we're planning on having an endless summer of Portuguese fest, of Portuguese feast. So it's a one day event, no procession, just a way to, you know, like everybody else during the pandemic, we were closed six, seven, eight months out of the, out of the, you know, the last 15 months, I think it was, 15 months. So it's tough for all of us, not only me, not only I, but for everybody. So it's a way to, you know, raise some funds for us and, you know, working on getting some sponsorships because we're going to have a live band there, we're going to have Portuguese foods, we're going to have meat on the stick, the Portuguese steak chips, you know, beer and wine, Portuguese side dough, sodas, waterburgers, all the good stuff. So that's about it, we, you know, yes, trekkie beans, oh yeah, absolutely. Just want to be with you.
It's nice to hear him say that because I'm with you, I'll be on the other side.
But, you know, we got through all, you know, the pandemic together as a, you know, as a group, you know, the members and the board of directors that we've had and the support that we've had from a couple of donors that actually, you know, gave us a little donation to help out, you know, with this and that. We, you know, we used to have donors once a week there, you know, just to get people in there to go eat. And we had to serve food, we couldn't just serve drinks, you know, for the guidelines. But, you know, just trying to get everything back to, you know, back to normal, running the feast. And I think we will, we will be successful because I think people want to get out there. I think people want to be outside, have a beverage with their friends and family, listen to live music, have fun, have some good Portuguese food and, so that's what I'm hoping, you know, to get the approval here tonight.
Okay, great. So this is a consent agenda item, it's not a public hearing anyway. So if anybody has any questions, motions were made to approve, is there a second? Motion.
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. KB?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor.
Awesome.
All set, sorry to make the wait that long, Paul's been kind of crazy and I know.
I enjoy the show.
Yeah.
Bye, Paulo.
Thank you. Hey, wait, wait a minute, hold on, let's see if he can say goodbye to you the way he's supposed to say it now. Okay, here's, here's the secret for those who don't know, is that Paul's a tutor. Yeah, and, you know, and Mr. KB has been brushing up on his Portuguese. And he probably knows, and I'm a half breed, I probably know less than Mr. KB does right now, so.
I hope to see you guys all there too.
You'll see, you'll see us there.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, I apologize, Ms. Roberts, yes? Yeah, all right, and on the item B, approval of the request of the Recreation Department to create aims pawn swim lesson donation account. And if somebody's ready to make a motion now, or Matt's here on the line as well. If it was, motion been made to second, is there, I mentioned, motion had been made to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On the motion, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. KB?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Sorry to hold you up, Matt, I know you're there.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, yeah, why don't we just do the remaining? We'll just do the remaining consent agenda items, item A and item D. Motion's been made and seconded to approve. On the motion, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. KB?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Gito? Chair votes in favor, unanimous. Okay, now, Ms. Roberts, and then we'll go into executive session after that.
Okay, well, let's just jump right into the management letter. What I originally asked Mr. Rowe is to give us a high level of how are we doing? How did we end last year? That's December 31st, 2020, because this is on GAAP standards. And I wanted him to share that information with the board. But also to address the recommendations in the management letter. So there were a number of comments, activities and recommendations. A lot said that they had been resolved, but how do we go about preventing that issue from reoccurring? There are second categories, some that were not resolved, that are still outstanding. And then the third that's, that really jumps out is we have the foreclosed properties that have, that were taken as far back as 30 years or more. And the auditor is recommending that we reclass those as an asset on our books. Just determine if they are useful to the town. If not, then we sell them off by way of auction. So let's just take it one at a time. Bill, if you could just tell us, how do we end as of December 2020? And then just jump right into the management letter, please.
So I was focusing on the management letter.
Okay.
I didn't have anything prepared for December. You got, you got a revenue sheet through March?
Yes.
Recently? That's mainly what we focus on are the revenues, so we have the nine months revenues. I hadn't really done an analysis on that, I was focused more on this letter, Ms. Roberts.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Rowe. We, I'm so thankful that you said that. Let's just jump right into the management letter because that has the, that'll give us the biggest bang for our buck anyway.
Sure, sure. So what I'd, what I'd like to do is, should I share my screen, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, that will work, Bill.
Yeah.
If I could, while Mr. Rowe is working on that, Ms. Roberts brought up the question of old properties, foreclosed properties. We are actively working with the tax collector to go through those, looking at what we can put out for sale and auction. We are actually in the process of doing that, actively looking at what we might want to hold on to and what we may want to put out for sale. So the tax collector is actively working on that.
So Dr. Graham, while Mr. Rowe is bringing that information up, what is our policy in terms of foreclosed property? Is it that we keep it foreclosed for 30 years? Or is that by, that was just a fluke?
I, I can't speak to how certain properties have been held in abeyance and maybe Mr. Rowe knows more. In many cases, they may be properties that really have little to no value. We may put them out for auction and nobody may bid on them, depending on what the property is. So right now, Ms. Nute is going through all of those properties to try to get a handle. The other thing is we have to try to recover some of the history of the deeds associated with those. And some of those properties that go back 30 years, it's actually very challenging to get that information. So she is actively working on that.
That's why a lot of the stuff didn't get put out because it was going to cost us more of a research, advertise, and you weren't going to recover it.
Exactly, some of these lots have little to no value. You know, they may have been lots that would have been buildable years ago, but because of environmental changes are no longer buildable. Doing all the research, getting 21E environments on them, things like that, may not even be cost effective as, as, it's like McCarrara points out. So Paula is trying to lead through that right now and we're trying to get a handle on what we have access to information on deeds on easily and how much money we're going to have to invest to get more information. So it is a process and things that have lingered 30, 35 years is making it a very challenging process.
So if we followed the auditor's recommendation, so this is just this one, this one comment from the auditor. If we reclass those foreclosed properties to assets, what is the challenge of doing that because if it was easy, you would have done it already?
I would defer to Mr. Rowe on the classification of those as assets. That's a little bit different from us determining whether we're going to keep them or sell them. How they're classified for audit purposes, I think is more of a finance question. Bill, I don't know if you, if you want to address that?
Well, I mean, you would have to, you'd have to pull all the property cards of town owned property and just go through them one by one and decide. And by the way, the, the auditor's, the engagement partner for the audit is scheduled for the 20th. And he's trying to get the Jim Powers, the managing partner, Powers and Sullivan as well to come in on the 20th. So you may want to follow up with them as well, they'll have experience as to what's done with other communities and so forth and how they go about it, whether you set up a committee and to look at it or, 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 you know, unfortunately, that's, you know, we count the beans, I'm not too familiar with the foreclosed.
I don't know how.
Properties.
Bill, can you speak up, Bill?
Yeah, you know, the thing is, all the audio is just coming through this small microphone right now. That's why nobody can hear.
Is that coming through now? Still weak?
That's better.
Okay. I just wanted to say that the engagement partner on the audit has been booked for the 20th and he's trying to get the management partner as well to appear as well. So, you know, if you have any questions, please, you know, please address that. If you want to send it, send, want me to send them to ahead of time, I can, I can do that as well. But I can, I can start, I can start at the beginning if you like. And then if you have any questions, I'll go through them, all the comments, and then if you have any questions, we can go back to those.
Okay, yes, Mr. Rowe. Okay, yes, Mr. Rowe, so to, just the, for the viewers, what we're talking about is $1.8 million at the close of fiscal year 2020, so we're talking about $1.8 million. We don't know if that is real money or not, but that is what, that value has been sitting on the books as foreclosed parcels. And the auditor is recommending that we reclass that as an asset. And then review to see if it's useful to us as a town, if not, we sell it all. So we're not, my question is regarding this $1.8 million in value, what is our policy? And then we can just start from there, does, does this re, uh, deserve a review of the policy? So we won't have this problem going forward?
Yeah, I think, I think so, I think it would be a good idea to take a look at each parcel and see if it's, if we're going to use it. Uh, basically for open space, or some other useful purpose, can you hear me alright?
Yeah, if I can interrupt, I think it's, A, the process is what, what Bill is talking about, which is actually what we're undergoing right now, because we have this issue. We are in the process of correcting it. I think Vice President Roberts, what you're talking about is that in the go forward, do we need to have a policy that says every year, when properties are closed off, we need to make a determination within so many years to do something with those properties? I, I think that basically, there's two different things, so A, we are correcting the problem currently, that's being addressed in the letter. And B, on a go forward, I think we should implement a policy that says, every year, we take a review of those, so that we don't get into this situation again. Is, is, does that answer your question? I think that that matters.
Yes, mhm. So, so what we're talking really is about liquidation. We're talking about putting this $1.8 million to work for us, instead of it sitting in a pool that's, that is called, um, foreclosed property. So, you're saying a review is going on, so we can move on to the next item. Because it's likely, if you said the auditor is in the office now, doing the audit for year in June 2021, this will take probably three, four months' time for the auditors, uh, to complete this audit process. It's likely this case will come up again. So we just have to be prepared for that, but you're taking action now, so that's a good thing.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Through you and Dr. Graham, um, we talked about it as it's $1.8 million, but it's, it's not going to be $1.8 million, because you're going to have, um, every parcel is going to have to have an appraisal. And you have to have a proper appraisal person do it, you can't do it in-house, even though somebody could have appraisal, um, stuff. You've got to do it out of house, and when you're done and done, you might be eating up $400,000, and then it's got to go to bid and, and advertising. I understand exactly what you're thinking of, which ones are worth going forward with, that's why you can't just have a policy, we're going to just dump this stuff. You have to figure out which one is viable to get money from. It's, it's, it's like we're being real estate agents in reverse.
E- e- exactly, we have some parcels that, that we've foreclosed down, we're also trying, we have certain parcels that we're trying to dig up the history of whether they were donated or foreclosed up. And we have to make the determination, because disposal of those properties has two different, uh, ways of doing it.
Exactly.
We have to look at how low the previous value can we legally sell. I mean, there are a whole host of things that have to be considered on this. So yes, it's not a straight, you know, and I understand that we want to classify it as assets, because it technically is an asset, but it also, what number we put on that asset is.
Could be a liability too.
There's a liability that upsets that asset, absolutely.
Yeah, when, when they say, when they say, uh, $1.8 million, that's the value of the taxes owed, that's not necessarily the market value of the properties. We did have, we, we auctioned off eight properties at, in the spring of 2017. Uh, four of them were finalized, uh, the other four, the financing fell through, so the potential buyers had to forfeit their, um, $10,000 deposit. But, uh, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of, you know, I'm not a treasurer, I don't pretend to be, but there's a lot of work that goes into, um, you know, preparing, preparing properties for the auction. So you have to try to look at the properties and see which ones you think are going to yield the most value, and hopefully, you know, it will yield a selling price over and above the amount of the taxes owed. So that's, that's the, uh, that's the game.
Right, that's the game, Mr. Rowe, and for all practical purposes, we did not have an auction in year 2021, or, or yet we have not. And we did not have an auction in year 2020. So I would assume in your process, in, uh, Dr. Graham's process, that you and the treasurer are laying out that you will likely have an audit in year 2022? Is that what the likely plan is?
Yes, I have, I have talked to Ms. Nute about this, and we want to going forward, get rid of these properties that are appropriate to get rid of. But again, there's a good amount of research that has to go into that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gito?
I think it's really important to understand that there is a difference between what this financial report says in terms of $1.8 million and the actual reality of what we might gain. And to continue to speak of this as $1.8 million. Doesn't help us, it doesn't help the Finance Committee, it doesn't help anyone in town deal with this issue until we do more analysis to determine what that number really translates into. Because if we talk about it as $1.8 million, then we have set the bar in terms of the public's perspective of the towns having $1.8 million that we're not dealing with, when in fact, we may not be able to get more than $200,000 out of the whole thing. So, I think we have to have sort of a realistic view of this, understand what it means in terms of reality, in terms of what we get back, and, and move on to something else.
I, uh, I mostly agree with you, I think that though, that, uh, to the extent that there are properties that can be sold, uh, the, uh, the taxes that will be coming back to us will be in perpetuity, so, uh, they become extremely valuable, uh, to future use. Uh, but setting an exact number on it isn't practical, I agree with that. And we, and we don't want to sign a number that is not realistic and, you know, like, not helpful to somehow, uh, get pulled out of the air and say this is, that this land is for. Because there's some that will be useful, useless, and some that will be, uh, perhaps more valuable than we realize. Maybe there's, uh, an oil field, they're right.
Yeah! We can only dream!
But the, uh, uh, so I, I agree with that, though, um, I, I've been, I've brought this up a couple of times over the years, uh, probably after I joined the board, the idea of selling some of these properties. And, um, uh, Ms. Roberts is right, we didn't do one, you know, an auction in 2020, 21, uh, I don't think we had one in 2019, did anybody actually know when the last time we auctioned?
I believe 17.
2017?
Yeah.
Uh, and yeah, some of these properties, I know are, you know, essentially slithers at the end of our complex, uh, which, whatever it's worth, I think we should plant, uh, fruit trees in. With my own, my own bond, uh, that or have public architects on there. Yeah, but they, they can still be good for the community.
Yeah, the green, absolutely.
Green space. Yeah, but I've also seen several of these properties where you see a house, and house, and house, a light plot, house, house, house. So, uh, I know some of them are not, not, appear not to be as valuable. I know there's a lot of research that has to go in there, but we don't have to know everything about every, uh, lot, it's what we can do anything. Uh, how far are we, and when, and when will we be able to start to, uh, determine whether or not we can, uh, react to these natural purposes, or we can use that for something like that.
I'm hopefully, I'm hopeful within the next several months, I would say that, for example, and you bring up a good point, we've had a Habitat for Humanity approach on properties that are foreclosed properties. Those are great examples of things that we can sell reasonably, it, it basically appraised value to Habitat for Humanity, it becomes beneficial to the community. Uh, those types of programs are also where we want to look, and not exclude those options. So it's not as if you're just saying, let's let it out to the market, and that becomes procurement question, is can we sell to Habitat for Humanity? Or do they have to go to auction process and bid? So every property, so, that's the problem, this is not a collective. Okay, we're just going to put it all out there on the list. And, you know, quality is indicated, Ms. Nute has indicated to me that every one of these requires major deed research. And so, for me to give it on, it's a time she hasn't worked on this for several months already, this is not a, something that we have not considered. It's just a matter of counting standpoint for the management letter, I understand what the auditors are looking at. But again, the uncollective revenue, they want us to put as assets, as, as, as Mr. Gito points out, we're talking about uncollective tax revenue, that's very different from sale. Uh, and again, I think we have to look at, when we have, like, habitat management process, we now have procurement and common law on, can we do that? And that's a great use, do we want to use a house, do we want to own it and maybe have it developed for some type of housing? I mean, every one of these needs to be considered for its value, and not just its financial value, its intrinsic value. And so those things we're trying to look at.
We, yeah, if I just, let me say, on that, on the 2017 date, when I got back on the board in 2015, we did just that. We put some property out, and, um, one of the properties, the other two were relatively simple. One of them, we just finished about five months ago. So back on what Ms. Roberts mentioned, we need, you know, some kind of a, a policy as to how we're going to do this. You know, what is going to be the process, so that we know the timeframe, and, and we know what's being done, because, yeah, no disrespect to anybody, but it was a cluster. This is a piece of property we could have sold some years ago, and we didn't find out until I got back on the board in 2019, that it basically had been sitting there, nobody acted on it. And now it's finished, and, uh, it'll go to town meeting, uh, you know, because we have to abandon a road, a paper street, that's basically, the land is landlocked. It's so simple, it's landlocked, it's in North Stoughton, nobody can buy it except for the person that owns everything else around it. But because we failed to, you know, figure out there was a paper street, you know, an old county road, we had to go to Norfolk County. But again, nobody knew the process, you know, and, and here I was, learning it, so that I could tell people what it is. So I think, that's the importance, is that we need a process as to how this is going to happen, who does what? It goes through engineering, goes through building, or what it is, you know, the 10 steps of, of getting this done.
And currently, Development Services is working with the Treasurer Collector on these properties, as she's pulling them up and going through these, these properties. And then we have requests from his departments to see exactly what we're talking about, we're trying to look at that basically.
Right, right.
If you're talking on a go-forward basis, yes, we need to have a plan as before closed, so we don't get these back.
Well, that's on your end, get it ready so that you can have something ready for us sooner or later with them, after they get done with that, so Scott had a question.
No, it's more of a statement on Habitat for Humanity. I was on when, when we had a couple pieces of property that went, and we tried to ask them to earmark them specifically for veterans, and, uh, they weren't too forthcoming with, with that idea. And a lot of things with Habitat for Humanity, they come out, and when I researched, and a couple other people helped me research, that a lot of people fail in those houses, and you don't realize it, and what happens is, once they fail, that property goes to Habitat for Humanity, and then they sell it, and that's how they pay their people who supposedly work for nothing.
And again, I use it as an example of, of, you know, approaches that we have coming in. But again, that's.
No, no, I, I.
Right, and it gets, it gets tricky, because, you know, you think you're doing the right thing, and it doesn't play out that way.
And this is a case where, does the town want to continue, and again, this is more for philosophical discussion, does the town want to continue to own some of those properties, work with developers as affordable senior houses, for example, veteran houses? I mean, those are the things we need to look at, we need to look at each of those properties. If we have a property that's sustained, let's say, five years, do we want to make it veteran's house? Do we want to make it 55 and older housing? Maybe we want to hold onto those properties and develop, well, I, I don't know, but we have to look at what those properties are, what the restrictions are. If there are environmental concerns, what was not designated is what, like, 1.30 years ago, maybe it will be now. So when it comes to closed on, it has value, but.
And sometimes you might not see it at our level, but you can get to Norfolk County deeds and find out there's a lien on that property there, that the town here doesn't see, and that happens a lot.
It is a major process.
Oh, yeah, I was jumping.
Okay, Ms. Roberts?
Alrighty, so, thank you for your patience, Mr. Rowe, can we start at the beginning, because we kind of jumped?
Sure, no problem.
Under the other comment section, so we, we start with, uh, student activity funds, that was remedied, but can you talk to that? How did that?
Yeah, sure, uh, this has been a comment since I arrived, uh, arrived here in 2002. Basically, uh, they, they are undertaking, Powers and Sullivan is undertaking a review of the student activity funds now. Uh, I do anticipate some findings, so we should probably wait for that report, uh, that should be forthcoming shortly.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rowe, so we're just tabling this one.
Yeah, and then the chapter 90, so what happens with chapter 90? Usually a lot of paving is done in the spring. Um, so, as a result, we have a deficit balance at June 30. Now, normally, if we have a grant deficit, the, we need to, uh, request reimbursement from the grantor and receive the money by September 30th. However, the DOR does make an exception for chapter 90, as long as you submit your paperwork to Matt's DOT by September 30th, then there will be no deduction from your free cash calculation. And the Public Works Director is, well, aware of that deadline, and he just submitted a huge reimbursement for several hundred thousand dollars. So, um, so we're on top of that now. Uh, the third one is compensated absence liabilities. Um, at, at times, we were taking an estimate, because of timing in the, timing of the audit. But now, we are using, utilizing the MUNIS system to calculate the compensated absences, except for certain departments, police, schools, fire, uh, Public Works. But all, all the town hall and the, most of the general government departments were using the MUNIS system for that. Other comments. To tax foreclosures we discussed, uh, the indirect cost allocation for the pension assessment. So they suggested that we get the covered payroll report in Excel from, from the Norfolk County Retirement System, and allocate it based on each individual person as to where they work. We were unable to locate that report, right now, what we do is we take the total department's payroll and allocate it to each department, uh, including both the general fund departments and the enterprise funds. And that's how we come up with our indirect cost allocation now, but we're going to try to, uh, look for that report, and, um, for the 23 budget, well, we're going to go ahead and try to find that report. Performance and planning board deposits, yeah, this is, this is an issue, we have apparently, um, for years, this, when I got here, people were depositing, um, bond money, what they call bond money, uh, planning board performance bonds, some of the planning board performance bonds, street opening bonds, et cetera, et cetera, and they were depositing it to one general ledger account. But when we go to, go to look for the support, you know, the contractor's name and address to support those balances in that general ledger account, we were unable, it was spotty, we were unable to find it. Um, going to check with the auditors and see if we can take that in as one-time revenue, release a piece of it. And, uh, going forward now, any bond that we, we take money for, the department ha, departments have to contact us for a unique project number in MUNIS. And, uh, so that way, we have a, a complete record in MUNIS of the. And so that way we have a complete record in Munis of the contractor and the amount. Same thing, tailings, you probably
Before you get into that.
Tailings are basically
Mr. Rowe?
Go ahead.
Mr. Gito has a question.
Okay.
So that, does that mean that, that none of the, either the $600,000 or $800,000 will go into any other accounts and you're just going to turn that back into revenue to the town? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's what I, yeah, I want to, I want to check with the auditors first and see if we can turn that liability into revenue for the town and, you know, leave a residual balance behind in case we have any claimants on that money. But again, unless you have a record in the financial system, it's, you know, the money's coming from various departments, so the records are going to be spotty.
Thank you.
So going forward, any new bonds to have to be recorded in the financial system.
Thank you.
Same thing with what they call tailings. Tailings are basically outstanding liabilities that can't be identified. So it basically comes from uncashed checks, outstanding checks. So again, we, going back, we had, back to 2003, 2002, there was a balance on the ledger, but it had no support. The way it works is for tailings, the unclaimed checks, you, if the check is unclaimed, then you have a procedure to turn the money over to the Secretary of State as a liability. So Ms. Nudas is right on top of this now. She gives me a listing, she gives me the numbers for the unpaid checks. We record those numbers and then we have a record of the check payee so that we can turn those over to the Commonwealth. And those are the comments. I'll entertain any questions if I can answer them or then, you know, we can hold them for the auditors when they come in on the 20th. If you like, I'll try to answer myself.
Questions to the board? Ms. Roberts?
No, just for clarification, Mr. Rowe. So there is, just for the abandoned properties, so the tailings right now, the uncashed checks, we do have a process in place now. So if it's not cashed within 30 days, 60 days, then you try to contact the owner, get the correct address, ask why you didn't cash the check, you know, things like that.
The, I don't believe the Treasurer goes to that length. I mean, these are probably checks that have been outstanding for, you know, at least one to two years. So she's trying to get those off her books. And but we, we do have a record of those in Munis. She gave us, as a matter of fact, she just gave our office 170 checks that need to be voided and put into tailings. So we'll record those checks, check payees, and then we'll have those if we need to turn that over to the Secretary.
Thank you. And the more and more that we talk about these items, it seems like the Munis system will be a godsend if everything is in, put into the Munis system.
That's, that's exactly right. You have, you have to take care of it on the front end, otherwise you're going to have problems. You know, if you just, if you just deposit it in a general ledger account
Right.
And say, I'm going to make a record in this, in this book or on the spreadsheet, then, you know, those tend to disappear. Whereas if it's recorded in Munis, it's permanent, so.
If I may, by Ms. Roberts, I think you hit it on the head. It's utilizing Munis now much more to its fullest or much more, in a much greater capacity. And that should help us going forward. And I know Munis has been a painful transition and it's taken several years, but some of the things that we're seeing in this letter hopefully will be resolved or at least better handled because of further implementation of all of Munis modules.
Thank, thank you for that clarification, Dr. Grimm, but as we, you know, we talk about more and more of these issues and we talk about the use of Munis and the training that's involved, it still comes to the forefront that some of the largest departments that we have are not fully implemented in Munis. And that's the Police Department, School Department, Fire Department, and the Public Works. Is there a process in place to get these departments fully implemented in use of Munis?
You talked about the compensated absences.
Yes.
Yep. Not to my knowledge.
I, yeah.
Very, very, police, police and fire leave time and school leave time is very, very Public Works not so bad, but isn't that, isn't that correct, Dr. Grimm?
Yeah, I agree. I think DPW can take a hard look and see what we can do with that one. I think police, fire, I can't speak for schools certainly, but police, fire, their schedules are extremely unique and their softwares that they use are more directly designed by Public Safety. I'm not sure that we have a Munis module that fits that well. I'll further check on that with Trish. Trish does work closely with both of those departments though on these types of things. So I will check on that with police and fire. I think DPW will be easier to implement and slowly we've been ramping up on several of those things. Town Hall and Fire are pretty much fully implemented with the exception of a few smaller modules that we can do relatively easily.
Yeah, Munis, Munis has been a process. Fiscal 16, you know, unfortunately, we can't shut downtown hall for six months and get everything done. So it's been implementing one piece at a time. First was accounts payable, general ledger, and then purchasing, and then, and the Treasurer's Office recently got all of the taxes, property and motor vehicle, onto Munis, which was a very, very complicated task and a very, very outstanding accomplishment that was. So now, now those are all managed in Munis as well. So that was, that was, that was a big deal. Next thing would be hopefully the utility billing someday, get into Munis. And then I want, hopefully do the point-of-sale receipts so departments can enter their receipts into Munis individually, decentralized, rather than have the Treasurer's Office enter everything, so. So that's on my radar.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rowe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my takeaway is there are a number of the findings, I call them findings, but they're really just comments, that are tabled until we hear the next completed audit, and that would be for year 2021. And then also we have some policy and procedures that we'll receive from Dr. Grimm. And then we'll, we have a step-by-step approach for Munis implementation to those other outstanding departments. So of course, that will be, all work will be prioritized in a certain one, two, three. Everything can be priority number one.
Sure.
But we're getting there. So thank you very much.
Okay. Bill, thank you so much for being with us tonight.
Let me get rid of this screen here.
Thanks, Bill.
Is that off?
Was never on on my end. I don't know if anybody else.
Oh, I can see you, Bill. Thank you so much. Oh, no, that wasn't, the presentation was never on, no.
The presentation was never on. I apologize. I thought it was on.
No, you, you did a good job explaining it.
Okay.
Okay, so thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, and the last one before we go into executive session would be the updates from the Town Manager on the Racial Equality Municipal Act Plan and the Fire Station Construction and the American Rescue Plan Act Funds.
Sure. First on REMAP, there's a meeting on Monday the 12th. Stephanie sent out an email today. Stephanie takes a lot of lead on this to implement or work on implementing some very concrete ideas that Tracy and Deanna are working on. I will say there's a lot of discussion on diversity and inclusion person in Town Hall, somebody devoted to that. Like Ms. Roberts, I've spoken about that sustainability and that concerns is that is something that warrants a full-time employee. One of the things that I've been able to do with HR is creating an HR task force internally with our employees, our employees. They have worked completely, they have packed up job descriptions, they have worked on performance evaluations, performing, they're working out policies and training. And what I would like to do is have that human resource task force as our internal group that works on diversity and inclusion hiring. And perhaps we need to hire a part-time person to work in that capacity. I think going forward, that's something we may review. As far as more details on this, again, I think we have meetings up on 12 to start him up with more concrete recommendations that I would expect they will be forward. Happy to answer any questions I had and move on to Fire Station.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Gito?
Do you, uh?
This is Red. Yeah, correct.
Do you have any reports that come back from that, from that group that, that you should be sharing with us from time to time?
I do not have formal reports that come back there. There's been a lot of idea generation at the two meetings that I usually get reported back to the board and then actively participating in meetings. I think what I'm looking at is email that I see, and Ms. Roberts has on many of the meetings as well, is more at this point, they're looking at different ways to approach diversifying workforce and that's sort of the goal that we're looking at. A lot of people know that I've been acting out with a group, with the colleges, trying to build this. But I think what I'm seeing in the email that I got from Stephanie is an active move for concrete implementation recommendations out of next week's meeting. At that point, once we get some things that will actually be implemented formally, I start sending them back to the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I add a comment?
Sure.
Okay, just to, because Mr. Gito may be new and I just, for the benefit of the doubt, I wanted to provide some context for REMAP. It'll just take a second. So REMAP is the Racial Equity Municipal Action Plan. We were one of several communities that was awarded that grant. We are working with the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston, the Government Alliance on Racial Equity called GARE, G-A-R-E, and the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, M-A-P-C. On that core community council, or I'm sorry, core REMAP team, that's what we're calling ourselves, it is Brian Holmes in the Police Department, Deanna Chatsko, I think that's how you pronounce the last name, Deanna. We have Fran Raden, Radenelli, I think that's how you pronounce her name. We have Kaba Sensei, who's a town meeting rep and I think he's on either the planning or the zoning board. We have Morgan McGregor. We have Pat Basler. We have Stephanie Patton, Teresa Tapper, Tracy Pira. We have Jonathan Ford. We have Michael Carroll and Molly Reed, Dr. Grimm, and myself on that core team. And we're doing research, we're looking at demographics, we're looking at policies, and we're just trying to solve for X. So I just wanted to provide some context.
Thank you very much.
Steve? Okay, on to the next one, the Fire Station Construction.
So we continue to have meetings. We have our internal staff right now. Just to give a brief, brief overview of where we are at, one of the things we started to get was costs. I've had some, we've got some general, we originally heard that this is going to be a $30 million project. That would have put without, if we went straight to offset that, what would have cost on debt service? Let's say, for example, we would look at adding probably a few hundred dollars on a tax bill. And that's, that was just, again, this is very rough calculations we're looking at. I had Ms. Herman run it, we had a $20 million station, a $15 million station. If we knock it down to $20 million station, for example, over 20 years, you're looking at over a one-year average residence, a $20 on tax bill, we'd knock that to $7 million, $74 on tax bill, and that amounts to about $18 a quarter. So just to get a sense of how those numbers work, so people can keep that in the back of their mind, what I'm looking at right now is what is exactly we need in a station? Do we need everything that was in the original program? What we're finding is that we have other town resources that absorb some of that. We may be able to trim down the cost, but still make it a little bit viable in the next 57 years of growth. I've talked to Chief Carroll, who had not been directly involved in a lot of the program prior, is now involved even more. He's done some research surrounding communities, recently built fires in the $15 to $18 million range, comparing that with what he's reading. He's got some very good ideas on that. We will see that we're going out for RFP again. Did go out for RFP, somebody did come back to them and drew that. There are some other parcels, if we scaled out with, there are some other very viable parcels that if those are, if people are willing to sell, may be very much options for us to use. So we will be going out on our league, looking down, again, at now somewhat scaled-down model that would suffice for response times, would suffice for a lot of equipment that can be stored, and do not increase our staff while at the same time, look at other town resources that we have, maybe moves and services that don't need to be in the Fire Station. New construction is expensive, square foot. The more we can utilize other town resources that we have to offset some of those things, the better. How large of a room do we need? Do we need extra conference rooms? Can we just simply have an emergency operations center? Where does that need to be? Those are the questions we're looking at actively right now. I think realistically, we can scale down the cost of that building, but the cost of this whole process, perhaps $10 million, it's a certain community with a new building that will suffice for response time and more than suffice for growth. One of the things we, I've asked is, we're a residential build out, I disagree in this town, but what other growth do we seek? We see industrial growth, for example, with Park Street Sewer area. We see potential for new hotels. That's the type of thing we have to think about with the future of firefighting in our town, not some of the residences, because we're a build-out. We know where all our homes are and know where we need to get to. Now we're looking at, when we're looking down, what are we going to do to that? Hazmat, for example, if we have industrial growth, if we lose the buyer, what are we going to do to that station? Those are the critical things to put into a new station. There are other operations that we're looking at, we're literally putting into a new station and may not necessarily have to build a new station. We have other town resources, we have town properties, we have a whole host of things we need to look at. So really trying to think outside of the box and very hopeful, the aspects that are in our league, we're hopeful it will be a couple of weeks' process. I am very hopeful that by mid-20 August, we can present to the board some very concrete ideas.
Any questions? Mr. Gito?
Uh, yes, I, I appreciate what you said. I guess my, my interest is when you look at, at sort of the difference between having all of a function in a building versus having parts of a function elsewhere, are you also considering what the, the long-term labor costs and other things are as well? I mean, I guess that I don't want us just to be looking at one aspect of it because we want to get to a certain point without thinking long-term.
Absolutely, sir. And I think that that's an important question. We look at making sure that we may use, you know, we just talked about two stations, three stations, all of those things, but the reality is we can do the response times that we need with two stations provided, and not have to increase staffing, provided we have the right occasions. And then there are other functions that don't necessarily need to be staffed, that we might be able to do with other municipal facilities and buildings that we have. And so we're trying to take into all of these sources that don't have to be staffed and provide those services have room, you do need to be staffed in 20 years from now because we might, you know, this is how growth, have room to house and pop up dormitories, also have room to probably, you know, have a reasonable number of PMF firefights, for example. firefighters, for example, we'd like to be able to continue to hire, but we have to have proper dormitory space. Those are the types of things that we're looking at, for growth, which we had in consideration. But absolutely, that question of increasing staffing and manning is a very expensive question, with a long-term vacation that exceeds almost the borrowing cost if you're not careful. So absolutely, yes, this is a case of looking at, what we have in this town, is taking the fullest advantage of every property, every building, everything that we have, and trying to think outside of the box, dropping the cluster just as much as we can, and still providing all those functions that we need to going forward. We don't want a little building that's already in capacity the day we move in, unfortunately is happening in the past, without judging how ugly.
Scott?
So let me, let me understand this, we're, we're already, after we dissolved the building committee, because they were constantly looking for new sites, now we're looking for new sites again.
Well, we changed the dynamic of the building.
Well, the dynamic is what the town can afford. Now, I don't understand this architect group or this engineering group, that they're turning out a building in Sudbury, which is much more wealthy a town than we are. Their budget is two-hundred and twenty-two million a year, all right? And they're talking seven-point-nine million, brand new out of the box, and we're talking thirty, twenty? Why are we not focused on that armory? That for some reason, this force field around that armory, a building we own, property we own, a building that's up, that there's nothing wrong with it, there was an assessment done on it before you came here, that the building's viable, there's nothing wrong with it, yet we turned a blind eye on the debt buy-in, we're going to go put a building someplace that we're going to pay dear amount of money for, because I'm going to tell you right now, nobody's going to go, hey, I got four million dollar piece of property, and I'm going to sell it to you for four-hundred thousand, because I feel good today. Ain't going to happen. We own this property, but what really bothers me is, when we were going to build the mausoleum in the swamp and ledge on stolen Reynolds property, there was no problem with response time. We had a fire chief that didn't open his mouth. Now, all of a sudden, there's a problem with response time from that armory area. And I'm, all I'm doing is repeating what wasn't said and what was said, and everybody was high-fiving each other, we were going to build this giant thing in the woods nobody could see, that was going to cost us untold amounts. I took a gentleman who's very good at what he was doing, on build-outs and stuff like that. When I secured the armory, we were talking three-point-five, maybe five million, built out. Here we are a little bit later, I figure, being greed, twelve million would give us a fire station, and you know what? That armory is bigger than the building that they built in Sharon, that everybody's going, oh, it's a combined station. No, it's not. That is not a combined station, not, Joe Wolt, I hate to tell him that he's wrong, but he's wrong. It might be on a combined parcel where there's a bunch of places, but it's not a combined station. Those guys aren't happy when they return, and there's all kinds of people parked in front of their doors, I'm back where they're supposed to do a drive-through, so they do the back end. You can put a lot of money into that armory. It's already there, and it's, it's on the fallout shelf list. There's two buildings in this town. The library, which was ripped to its skeletal core for fourteen million, and I can't build a fire station in this town for ten? And we could need everything they need. They don't need the community rooms and all this. They need the locker rooms, the firefighter women and firefighter men. They need a room where they can sit, watch some TV, have breakdown, and sleep in quarters. It's all there. It just has to be remote. Why are we wasting time RFP-ing? We own the property. I just don't understand the focus. And I'm, and I'm not telling stories out of town. Nine, seven-point-nine million, brand new, out of the raft of Sudbury, and they put everything on debt exclusions. We could do it inside the budget at twelve million.
I would just say that nothing's off the table at this point, including you.
What I'm trying to say is, priority should have been focused on that. They blew four-hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money.
With all due respect, the, I can't speak to the Reynolds property, I can't go back that, that was a large public safety building, we're on a whole different page now, and this is, this is before we brought in the architect. The architect currently is working now with us on a, within that same amount of money, on a much more scaled-down version, because at this point, they looked at me, and they said, do you want a price cap on this? And I said, thirty million is not a price cap, it's significantly lower. And so, very honestly, we had a discussion that I really didn't think it needed to be worth it.
Why, why do we tell people where to start to bury us?
No, it's not a case of where to start to bury us, but they do need an understanding of the general concept of where we want to be. We need to know, it's, it's two moving parts. What do we need, and how much are we willing to spend? And so in the meantime, while we're looking at what we need, I had Sue Herman running numbers on what the actual cost we needed for people at a certain level. All I can say is, I think we've had some progress in the past three, four weeks, nothing before the table, however, what I'm looking at is much more scaled up, which is exactly what you're talking about. I am on record repeatedly as saying that I'm not fond of Sharon's station. Joe actually laughs at me about it, because I tell him all the time that I have major issues with that, I drive by it every day, it's a traffic nightmare.
It's a nightmare.
And I do not want us to be in that situation. So I absolutely agree with you on that. But what I am saying to you is, I agree, the thirty million dollar station is not what we need. What we need is a station that serves a public, that can house the equipment that we need, and there are other services that were in there that we can put elsewhere in town on properties, and that's what we're looking at.
Well, what I was looking at is, if we close, get them out of Station One, which is, is, it's travesty that's still, that's still there at this time, but I figured dispatch could go into the old Station One. Pull it out of, pull it out of the police station, I mean, we sold the bill of goods, you weren't here, that it was portable, now we have to buy it all. I understand that.
Station One, and without getting too deep into things, because I don't want things getting ahead of us, Station One is still a townhouse building, we will move operations, actual fire response operations on there, but that building is well being looked at for what we can do with it, and we probably will address it in the CDO after some funding, because it is a historic building. So, Mr. Graham, without giving too much out, because I, I hate to pass the plan out, because you know how, as well as I do, pass the plan, it becomes a war.
It's just, I've, I've been raised, money's money, and I've been running it since I was a business since I was seventeen, and I, and I just don't understand why we're staring at something wonderful.
If something like Station One makes you have a wild heart of our community again, in a supportive way, in addition to certain response time, a different part where we need to put it, that's what we're looking at. Really looking outside of the box. So I don't think we're far off, I just, again, don't want to go too far down the road of where we are.
See, I, I understand where you're going, and, and people always say, why can't we have three? And I know why we can't have three, because we cannot afford to hire eleven more firefighters.
There are operations that don't have to require increased over fire, that's, that working with our fire chief can first suffer up, and that's exactly what we're looking at right now. And hopefully, like I said, in a few weeks, I can give you some concrete, real concrete, but I just don't like to pack a plan and have chaos with the results of it, so. But we're getting it very quickly, on what I think would be a very large loss, and I'm actually kind of excited. And I have not been excited about this topic, to be honest with you, it's been a little bit of a head banging against the wall, but it don't blame on anybody, it's just the nature of it. I actually, in the last meeting, we had pretty exhilarated ideas around the home room, and the potential, this might be something that serves the town financially and operationally, and make use of as much as we can that we have.
Thanks. Steve?
Uh, it's getting a little late, it's pretty steamy in here, so I, I'm tired, I've got to be honest, so I hope this doesn't come out, and I've nothing but my brain, all of it, so I should know that. But I do think that prioritizing the depot is something that the entire board would have to do, and so now we haven't done that. I'm not saying that, I don't know, by this as supported, I'm waiting for some recommendations that you have available. It certainly is a building that's never come off the table, is an option, but there's also been pushback from a lot of different places, from people I trust, from people who know more than I do, so, and these people who've advocated, you know, who also have smart people who I trust. So, so, you know, if, when we get a little more information, if that's the reason as I can go, you know, we just have to argue it, but just to, to, what I'd like to say is that the talent position we've taken us on, this task on since we voted, we're not given a pleasant task, you know, this is an unusually difficult assignment, pressure is for me, and I'm sure for them, as high as anything that we have else going on in this town right now. And so I do, you know, I understand the frustrations, I also do appreciate the work, and I'm looking forward to see what you guys come up with.
To your point, maybe I can tell you, I feel like, I do like the challenge, I feel like what's down, the pressure's on, it is on, my team knows that, and I basically have said to my team, I hope it works, over my big body, do we not have some viable plan? You may not vote it, you may not like it, but we want to have a viable plan that I can put comfortably on the board and say, okay, you all as a board now, take a look at this and do what you will, but I've got to give you something concrete enough for you to do that. It may be two options, I don't know, whatever, whatever comes out of this, but we are on a mission, I can tell you we are on a mission.
For what's worth, and people who are on that, on that particular group, I mean, I know everybody, Sue Herman is, Mark Chrisdale, Paul Tumpum, the year on as well.
Fran Brutini, yeah.
Yeah, Sue Herman, Fran Brutini, Chief Carroll. It's a huge input right now on it. I hope I didn't forget anybody.
It's a phenomenal group, it's absolutely phenomenal. With just diverse ideas, and one person, like we walked out of idea generation going, like one of the best meetings I've ever had in a long time anyway.
It's a very strong group. It's an eighteen, it's an eighteen by eighteen.
It is my eighteen on, I absolutely, and nothing against certain people else, but this is these people who truly are experts in these areas. So, I'm excited about that.
Okay, Deborah?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Graham, thank you for taking this all on. I really have two questions for you. The first question is regarding, it was on that parcel on Park Street, the only proposal we received, what happened with that? All of a sudden, it was for the two-point-four million dollars?
First of all, yeah, so first, we can't buy anything higher than the praise value, and that was significantly higher. And then while we were actually reviewing it, we did have a group together to review it, a pure group that we do, we do in the mid-opening, and they were reviewing it, but as they were reviewing, the owner also withdrew their, their offer, they changed it. So we do have other parcels that we think are viable in that vicinity, that we may come in a much more affordable number. So we'll see what happens.
Okay, thank you, because I, that was just hanging out there like a dangling parter simple, I didn't know if you needed to send them a letter, or if it was under council review or something, but you answered that question, they rescinded their offer. The second is, the second question I have in statement slash comment, I like the idea of two options. We don't know what the town meeting reps appetite will be. So if you look at the Cadillac approach versus, let's say, the Volkswagen, and that is specific to source of funding, I'm referring to source of funding, how do, if we pay for it totally as a debt exclusion, or if we pay for it through the budget? And through the budget, we're talking about payments, the payment through the budget, we're not talking about, oh, if it's a twenty million dollar fire station, that is paid in one year. No, it's a payment as debt comes off, this payment would come on. So how does that look? And what, what triggered the thought is, you said something about two options, I think two options is a way to go. The other thing that would triggered my thought was, last year sometime, it was Sue Herman, Rick Hill, and I think it was the, our, our finance person at Hilltop Securities, Cinder Macnerney?
Macnerney, yeah.
Yeah, I think they actually started a process of seeing, what does it look like if we make those payments out of the budget? So if we're talking about what I know is, is four percent of the operating budget will, I think that might be doable. And then save the, the debt exclusion for the high, I mean, sorry, the south school and, and the police station, but I think that's already in the works. I would like to see one complete package, just so we as a board could put our thoughts together around that idea.
So I had seen the original model that Mr. Hill is part of the former committee had worked on, and then I spoke separately with Cindy, because that model would have had that money right now, which would have been very challenging with the COVID issues and revenue issues that we see, I had some concerns about that model. But right now, Sue Herman sits in on the team that we're in now, she's running these numbers as we go, looking at what we can sustain. So for example, if it's a twenty million dollar station, two-point-five percent interest with a twenty-year yield, we would have to come up with one-point-two-eight-two million dollars in budget. If we dropped it to a fifteen million dollar station, it drops actually to nine-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars in budget. So Sue is running those numbers for me, so I can look at what we would have to absorb it on budget, if we did a straight cost, you know, a, 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 a straight addition into that debt service line. So we're sort of formally running those now, Cinder Macnerney, of course, will always work with us. As Sue starts to formalize those, Sue's giving me very rough numbers at this point, in fact, she's even on it. But I just asked her to provide the rough numbers, like a general sense of what I've got to think about in the operating budget, if we try to solve it in the operating budget. And then if we were to do part of it in the operating budget, part of it, no, or excuse me, an exclusion, you know, those options, the financing options, I think we would be able to give a couple of different financing options. That would mostly be easier than the foundation, those are part of it. Financing options are a little easier to provide, so we will be providing you a few different options on financing.
Oh, that's excellent. And you said your target date to have that to us is mid-August?
I'm hopeful to have a general plan to you, where I can share a general plan to you by mid-August, so I'll have all the financing replaced by then, and the numbers replaced by then, I don't know, but at least to give you a sense of something more concrete than what I'm giving tonight, you know, this is the growth I hope we can go down, or be one of the major plans we're hoping to implement. There are some moving parts that have to come into place, A, I have to find out if certain properties are available, that's going to be right on top, if certain locations are or aren't, that changes where we go. Again, there are reasons, there are whole posting things that are still in play, but I just wanted to give you a sense of some of the things we're thinking about outside of the ideas already out there. I'm hopeful that by mid-July August, I would be able to come up with a very concrete, very good idea and plan that we'd like to do.
Thank you very much. Two options, yes.
I'm trying. I made up, if two options for location may not be viable, we'll try to avoid one, but I can tell you the financing will be able to be.
Yeah, I'm referring to funding source, financing, yes, two options, yes, thank you.
Okay, the American Rescue Plan Act.
So very, very briefly, we got the first two of two installments.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I just say one more thing?
Yeah, we got to keep moving forward.
No, I, I won't, thank you. I won't go long. In your putting together your plan, if you, if, if there were a little leeway one way or the other, in why you got to where you are, I think that would be really helpful. I mean, so I, I thought that Ms. Robis was... I mean, so I thought that Ms. Roberts was asking you for two plans. I would have been happy with that, but I would be happy with one, with why you got there, from what's the pluses and what's the minuses, if you go one way or the other. The reason I ask that is that we have to be able to communicate a decision, and we need to recognize that we're thoughtful about what we're doing.
I absolutely agree. The public is so much a part of this. And yes, it represents the public, but we also, the town meeting as a whole is going to be looking at this and needs to understand all of the nuances involved in the decisions or the recommendations that we make from at least the staff side. Yes, absolutely, sir. Recovery?
Yes.
So we've got the first of two installments. First is approximately 1.5 million, and the second will be approximately 1.5 million. Ms. Herman has been looking at what we can do with this. You all took a vote in April to more tenderly, and then vote on, as you've pointed out, we have new members of the board. Initially, when the money came in, I asked us to consider that a portion is used for PPEs, protective equipment, to continue purchasing some, a portion used to restore stabilization, and a portion to be used for Park Street Sewer. Sue has determined we cannot use it for stabilization purposes. We did request to find out. It's a little disheartening, because we're always being punished for having stabilization funds. So towns that lost money because they didn't do things right, or had some services, actually could use that money, because we chose to use our stabilization to bridge us, we cannot reimburse that, but we'll find other ways to reimburse it free cash or whatever else. We will restore the stabilization funds. But as far as what I'm asking tonight, is that we still would like to use a bulk of it for Park Street Sewer, which was supported by the board before. We're looking at approximately 150 for PPE, which is personal protective equipment. We've dropped out a little bit, because really, at this point, it appears, number one, PPE is expensive. If we do have another, to go with again, it's probably likely to be more funds coming for that, more funds and whatnot. And we're looking at a portion being used for Park Street Sewer. We're looking, I believe, at approximately 950,000 of it. But what we also are looking at, Sue is confirming that we can do this. We have a feasibility study that we're going to need to go to town meeting for, for the school in Canton Street project. That is a tip, that's going to be the project itself being funded by the Commonwealth, but we have the feasibility study, it's about a 450,000 dollar study. Sue is confirming that we can actually, that we may be able to use this recovered money for that feasibility study. So if we can, where I would look is, so there are sort of two options. If we can use the feasibility, if we can use the feasibility, which here's we had, looking at a breakdown of about 150 for PPE, and approximately 450 for feasibility study for school in Canton. If we don't use this, we're gonna have to go to town meeting and borrow it. And then 950,000 of this toward the sewer project. Again, we will in another year get it, another 1.5 million. If we cannot use the money for the school in Canton Street project, we likely would ask to have it all used toward the Park Street Sewer. Remember, whatever we offset reduces any borrowing we might have to do, and proportionally lowers the evidence. So ultimately, Park Street Sewer was already knocked approximately 3 million off of about a 6.5 million dollar plus. This would knock all this other room off of it. And if we were to put another 750 million next year with that next installation, we may be able to get this Park Street Sewer project for, you know, 2 million dollars, which would be phenomenal, if we could get that 1.5, 2 million dollars, maybe even better. So I'm just asking the board, I think this is something that should have board support, because it's such large-scale numbers. So I'm asking the board to support at this point, conditionally, 150 PPE, approximately 450 for school in Canton Street feasibility, and about 950 for 1.5 for Park Street Sewer.
Let me give those numbers again, Steve jotting them down.
And they're approximately 150 for PPE, approximately 450 for feasibility study, and approximately 950 for Park Street Sewer. There may be a few variations in those numbers, but.
Okay. What you're saying is for the project.
For school in Canton.
All right, Scott has a question.
A question to you. If they turn down the 450 for the school in Canton, couldn't we just hang on to it?
We could, but there are restrictions on how we have to use it. We have to use it by Susan, or I think 2025, we have to commit it by the end of 2024. So we can't hold it indefinitely, and we can't then just .
I figured if we didn't put it in stabilization, we would just stabilize it.
And we will bring it out. We'll have to look at some of the things we go forward with, some of the North Lawn County, we still have North Lawn County money that will be coming. That may be up to 4 million dollars. And so, we're in the process of calculating what we would consider lost revenue because of COVID. Bill Rogers is in calculation, Sue is working on that as well. And then we can look at what we can offset, that may be a little more creative, some of that North Lawn County money as well. So there's funds coming in. Just in the short term, I'm asking for these funds to be used toward these very concrete projects.
One of the concerns I have is the boxing values, and I'm not exactly sure how to vote on boxing values.
I, so I think, because there's no formal requirement that you vote on the specific numbers, I'm asking, I'm gonna use sort of a general range of where we believe these numbers are false. Obviously, we're asking for board support to use generally these range of numbers. We may be within, you know, if the feasibility study comes in at 465,000, and I offset it with the PPE money, and I will report back to the board on the final numbers, because we have them, because I think it's actually, you know, 1.53 million if not, that some of these are, that I'm giving you right now are approximations, because I don't have a hard number on the feasibility study. If I have a hard number on the feasibility study, then I can get hard numbers, you know, but 150 is probably concrete for PPE. It's the feasibility study and the remainder of that to go to Park Street Sewer, maybe that related brings something.
Well, I would be prepared to make a motion if I'm ready for that.
Could I ask a question before you make a motion?
And I'll second that.
Motion hasn't been made yet. Hold on a minute.
450 for, was it the Canton Sewer feasibility study, or?
No, no, Canton School Street in the section.
Thank you.
That's what I had expected here, but that's not what I heard.
Okay. Make a motion?
Expect it to.
Make an action, Steve?
Motion to, to follow the participation of town manager for the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds in the current amounts, approximately 150,000 for PPE, 450,000 for feasibility study for the school, street, Canton Street intersection, and 950,000 for towards the Park Street Sewer. Got a couple of other things here. If the, if the amounts, these are about three amounts, if they are greater than 5% more than the initial, maybe some numbers, which is just bring that to the board. Additionally, the, if the 450,000 can't be used for school, street, Canton Street feasibility study, then we then agree that it be used for the Park Street Sewer project.
Second?
There's a motion made in second. Any further discussion? There are none on the motion. Stephen?
Aye.
Mr. Brower?
Aye.
Mr. Gito? Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor.
Thank you, and I appreciate that very much.
Okay, so at this time, I will enter, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose to approve and release executive session minutes of the train station 45 Wyman Street to the public, and to approve executive session minutes of 6:15, 2021. Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and on the motion, Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Brower?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
And if the chair votes in favor, we will adjourn to the third floor conference room, and we will not come back into open session. We will adjourn from executive session. And thank you to all who are watching, and thank you to the SMAC staff, you know, for trying to help us through our first hour. I know it was a challenge, but we made it through it. So thank you very much, and thank you all for joining us, and good night.
Deborah, you have the link?